All right. Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, February 22nd, 2023. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. Also, I'd like to announce that this is being televised live on local channel 18. So if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next, does anybody have a public comment regarding anything not related to any of the agenda items tonight? If so, you can check in with Mary Ann, and you can have three minutes to make a public comment. Okay. All right. I'm going to ask for a public comment on each hearing tonight at the end of that presentation. All right. Scott Goldstein is absent tonight, so sitting on our first hearing will be our four regular board members as well as George. So Sharon, would you read the first new hearing?
205 Uncle Percy's Road. Petitioner BS Design requests a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaw to allow for an addition alteration of an existing dwelling within 50 feet. Two wetlands are property located in an R3 zoning district in New Seabury. MAP 123, parcel 185, Mashpee, Mass. Owners of racket is CNG and Sarika Agawal.
Okay.
Hey. Good evening. Thank you for the racket. My name is Thomas Funker. I'm a professional land surveyor with BSS Design, representing Mr. Agawal, who is also here tonight. And this is to expand. It was written in the, or described in the hearing notice, proposing two small additions to an existing dwelling. This is 205 Uncle Percy's Road. And there's a pond, small pond in the background, which is a New Seabury open space lot. And this, the house conforms to all setback requirements to property lines, and it also conforms to the lot coverage, both existing and proposed. There's less than 20% lot coverage. So what we have, if you can see, the highlighted in yellow is the existing house running around here. And there's a proposed addition number one in this location. The existing house is 37 feet from the wetland that's surrounding this pond. And the proposed house is, in this one addition here, is 51 feet from the wetland, but it's 27 feet from the coastal bank. So this addition is further from the wetland resource areas than the existing house. And then addition number two is the same. It is further from the existing house, and that's being 41 feet to this deck. And the enclosed addition here is, I think it's labeled on this one, it's like 40, I think it's 48, 46 feet. Yeah, it's from the top of the coastal bank. So both of these are on the backside of the house and not visible from this street, that being the, what could be considered a public way. They are, I can show you one here on the architectural plans. In the elevation view, so this is the small addition number one. It's a one-story high addition in this location here. And so the existing house is taller than it. It's up to a two-story existing house here. And the addition number two, I just have on a smaller page, I think we sent into you. So that also is a one-story addition connected to where it's a two-story house. So they're both small, low additions that will not change the character. As I said, it's not visible from the street at all. Could be visible from the pond for people walking along there. And I believe this is not detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. And it, other than the setbacks from the wetland, it conforms to all other aspects of the setbacks and the lot coverage in this zoning district.
So you're not really asking for anything, then? You're not going any closer to the water, any sidelines, anything?
Correct. It's just within 50 feet of the wetland, so it's...
Got it.
So we're not closer than, no variances.
Right. When you calculated your lot coverage, did you exclude wetlands, floodplain, coastal bank, anything that's considered under Mass. state law, wetland-wise?
I...
48, I think, I forget the code. Is that excluded from your lot coverage?
I'm pretty sure I did. I'd have to check. There's, I'd have to get my calculator out to do it, but it's, there's just the sliver, there's no wetland on the lot, no...
Floodplain?
There's, there's some floodplain and some coastal bank, but as far as I recall, I did calculate it based on the, only the upland area. I can double-check that.
I think that's very important. We've had a re-mand based on that theory.
Mm-hmm.
And I think lot coverage, I know lot coverage has to be utilized, calculated, by the reduction or not inclusion of anything that is outlined as defined as wetland, which is flooding, you know, flood zones, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's very important.
Yes.
And we would need existing and proposed, based on wetland exclusion.
Well, he's got calculations. The question is, does it include...
Does it include...
I mean, it's well, it's well under 20%, so I'm confident.
Understood.
But I think, from one member, I, from my aspect, I think it's important to learn as we go, right? So we have had a re-promand, a remand, sorry. That remand states, slipping the tongue, that was a...
I'd say same thing.
Yeah, same thing, basically. So, I mean, I think it's imperative that the calculations clearly depict the fact. When you, and when you're asked the question, and we're trying to make this statement to all engineers slash attorneys that come in front of us, the document has to clearly state, meaning your site plan, that it does include anything that's defined as a wetland in the state of Massachusetts.
But before and after.
Right.
And I actually asked, as one member, I said the following to someone, I think it was at the last meeting, I would like to see utilizing and not utilizing. Now, under the law, we have to, under the zoning bylaw, we have to utilize. But I'd like to see, from my own mind, from my own mind, so that I'm, as a member, not creating for me a, you know, mega mansion slash scenario where we're increasing these sites too large, too much, forgetting, not forgetting about what the zoning bylaw requires, which the remand says by a judge that it cannot include, meaning lot coverage, in anything that's considered under the definition of wetlands. But I also would like to see it the other way, which is the old way. Only because that will tell me, because here's a theory...
How it affects people.
Well, here's a theory. You could be at 75% with a pre-existing nonconformity, using all, let's say, almost all lots and wetlands are, it's a floodplain. That means you could be at 90% lot coverage, and you go into 92% lot coverage, which you may have a right to if this board lets you to do that, based on determinational of, you know, not more detrimental to the neighborhood, blah, blah, blah. But I also want to see the 20%, so that I can see it from a physical standpoint. So I'd like to see it from both ways. I think it's important.
Do you understand what he's asking?
I think basic, I mean, he wants to see it...
Old and new.
You know, omitting or including the wetland resource areas in the lot coverage.
A better way to put it is old, old way, and as told to us by a judge, the correct way.
Yeah. And existing and proposed, so we have a...
That is correct. I would like to see all four ways.
Existing and proposed in both scenarios.
And that helps me to understand...
Pre, post, old, new.
It helps me understand that if you were at, you know, 23% under the old way, and you go into 27% of the old way, then I can look at the McMansion theory and just see what that makes as far as visual. But then we also have to, because of the remand, utilize the correct interpretation, which is not utilizing for square-footage use for lot coverage, anything that is considered the definition of a wetland.
Also, don't forget that we want to make sure to not include land subject to coastal storm flowage.
Yeah, I know, that could be an issue in some, a lot of areas in New Seabury and other parts of Mashpee.
Popularity is a big issue.
Under the old way, you're less than 20% under the proposed, right?
Yes.
So show us the existing and proposed under the old way, and existing and proposed under the new way.
So you're pretty confident that it's under 20?
Yes. I'll give you the other numbers.
All right. Why don't we, we can proceed and come back with that number. If that number's over 20, you've got to come back.
He's already shown it's under 20, Jim.
It's well under.
Well, not if it included the wetlands.
No, the wetlands, he's going to be over on existing and proposed.
Well, according to this, your existing is 11.09, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the new is...
Proposed is 12.8.
12.8.
12.83, but we don't know if that includes any wetlands.
Correct.
Or coastal flowage, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. So if, when you redo the calculation, if the number comes over the 20, you're going to have to come back.
If I could, just for clarity's sake, I have no problem if asked to make the motion, but I'm not so sure I'd be in favor of it doing it. But I'm, I will, more than happy to make. I'm concerned that we have to send a clear message. We've got a remand, from me, I'm only speaking from me, we've got a remand that says, hey, guys. And you know what? My attitude is, hey, guys, it's on the plans, got to be right. And we've been told that plans, yeah, I...
Well, I'm looking at, you see the lot here?
Yeah, I do, yep. I think if you take the coastal...
There's a very small part of it.
Well, no, I think if you take the coastal bank out, the wetlands out, the flowage, and then you take possible floodplain out, I don't know where that number will be. I'm not an engineer. But what concerns me is not knowing, not being able to make a decision based on what that number might be. It may be going from 19% to 20, 19.9999, and I might not, I might not be happy with a 19.99. I don't know. I just get concerned, remands, as far as I'm concerned, I think we need to be paying very close attention.
Yeah, according to this, the floodline goes right through the house.
I'm not an engineer. I just need a number, and a number that says floodplain, I mean, the lot coverage is here, and when you take out all the things that that remand says, which is anything that's defined in the state, Mass. state law as wetlands, then it's there. I don't change plans. I don't, I only ask for information. And I just would have a problem myself. I'm only one member out of five. More than happy to make a motion if I'm asked to.
I also should note the conservation comments.
Want me to read it?
Yeah.
Okay. 205 Uncle Percy's Road. Commission approve this project condition mitigation planning to remove existing platform deck near edge of pond. This platform deck is actually not on the applicant's property, but rather on New Seabury Properties' open space land. Got it? And my concern is, is from the wetland standpoint, we've been told by Drew more than once, to deal with our issues on our own. For me, I saw a judge give us a remand, and I, I want to send a message. Like, you know, we sat in this board, or I, in reference to the 20% lot coverage, I'm not going 20.111, 20 point, you know, whatever, unless something dramatic happens. And as far as I'm concerned, lot coverage is an enormous issue. As far as I'm concerned, we get a remand where a judge says it's important, I'm there.
It seems the cleanest way would be to request, to continue the hearing, to give you the numbers. I mean, then you would have no...
I'm not the chairman, I'm just giving you the... I think it's important, for me, this...
I don't have a problem with that.
I think that's appropriate.
I think it's important for me, as one member, to tell you how I feel, right? So that you don't, don't count on my vote in this one.
So no matter what, no matter what, you're going to remove the existing platform, is that correct?
Yes. That's, that's a tiny bit of coverage.
Dave, any comments on that?
I don't have any issues.
All right. Before we make a motion to continue, do we have other questions?
Yeah, it was...
Do you want to read the board?
God-provoking is, this platform deck is actually not on the applicant's property.
Right.
A corner of it is.
God-provoking.
Yep.
Do you want to finish with the comments, Tim?
Sure.
Okay. Board of Health. Health Department is okay with the addition of a dining room not to be used as a sleeping room. Expansion of the kitchen. There will be no increase in bedrooms. The septic permit states that a five-bedroom septic is provided. The property is in zone two, so the dwelling is restricted to five bedrooms. I don't think Catherine has one.
Is that it?
Yeah, I don't think Catherine has one.
Can I ask a question for clarity's sake, in terms of what we should be looking for
here? We have, we have the BSS plan, and the plan says lot coverage by structure, giving us information as to what the lot coverage is with the total amount of land, irrespective of how it's, what it's called. Should we be requesting that that information that you are looking for be on the plan that we received?
Correct.
Rather than just a notification?
I, I heard from the applicant, please, you do very good work, I'm not questioning that, but I hear the applicant say, I think it'll be okay, it should be okay. Doesn't work. We're looking at a piece of paper with a stamp, with a little signature on it. He's been to college for several years, did get that stamp, saying that I can make an, if I can, an intelligent decision, or at least an informed decision. Tim, hopefully, the information I then have, I can make an intelligent decision.
Which is why this has to come back, and it can't be done with a telephone call tonight.
We've done that on some other aspects, but most aspects, if not all, were part of a remand, and certainly weren't part of this, let's train, the first time we had this remand issue, we said, and I think it was Chris Karan, we've got to let everybody know, engineers, architects, attorneys, that this is the process because of this remand, and that everybody's going to start following. It's like the 20% rule, where we all said to everybody, don't come in at 20.1, because we're going to be really tough on you. Don't come in, not excluding, double negative, not excluding, you know, state statute wetlands, right, from your lot coverage. It just doesn't work.
I'm good with it.
And then, and again, that's just me.
No, I'm in agreement. I think we need to see pre and post.
When's the next meeting?
On both aspects.
Exactly.
And you come in front of the board a lot, and that'll help, because now in the future, that'll, we knew we were going to go through a certain amount of this, and we presumed we were going to, I guess a better way to put it, so...
Right.
All right. So would you like to continue to March 8?
I'll have to, yes, I'll have to request the continuance to March 8 to get all the numbers on...
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's engineers of 205 Uncle Percy's Road, request for extension until March 8, was it?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
And let's see.
Jim?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. See you in two weeks.
Thank you.
All right, Sharon, I'm going to have you sit on the next one.
Okay. You ready?
Nothing to sign, right? Yeah.
61 Secolet Island Road. Owners David J. De Shulo and Elise S. De Shulo request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the relocation of existing single-family dwelling and construction of a garage on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 119, parcel 3, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Karan, representing David and Elise De Shulo. They are the owners of 61 Secolet Island Road. They have applied for a written finding under section 174-17 to do two things. They would like to construct a garage, and they would like to relocate the existing single-family dwelling. We are in the R3 zoning district, and what I can show you, and what I tried to do, is show you a plan with some colors on it. The yellow is the existing dwelling, and the pink is the garage, and then the relocated single-family dwelling. There's no, there are no changes to the existing single-family dwelling, other than the fact it's being relocated. This is not within conservation jurisdiction. We don't have any wetlands issues. We don't have any land subject to coastal and flowage issues for this particular lot. The lot itself is non-conforming. It's only 8,277 square feet with 120 square feet, 120 feet of frontage. The structure itself is non-conforming in two areas. And to Secolet Island Road and to Secolet Point Road, the Mashpee bylaw requires that we be 40 feet off of all roads. So a little bit of a unique lot, but we need to be 40 feet off of both. We are within the setback to both Secolet Island Road and Secolet Point Road. So at its closest point, we are 26.4 feet from Secolet Island Road, which makes it a non-conforming condition, and we are 39.5 feet from Secolet Point Road, which makes that a non-conforming condition. The proposal, again, is to build a garage, which will not create any new nonconformity, so we're, we're going to be within the setback to what I would call the north, our northeasterly setback, and the southerly setback, which is 15 feet, 15 feet, we'll be 16 off of both. So that will continue to be conforming. We will improve the non-conforming condition to Secolet Island Road, improving that to 30.8. We are making this more non-conforming on Secolet Point Road in order to accommodate the relocation of the structure. As you can see from the green, that's basically your zoning envelope, so it's a really small envelope. So we're hoping that, you know, because we're improving off of here, that we have a little bit of leeway to increase there. But we're still 25.6 feet off of the road. So again, that would be, you know, exceeding any type of side yard setback, or like, you know, as I say, we have a unique condition because we're off of two roads, and we need to be off of two roads. It is a two-bedroom house, and we're not increasing any bedroom count or anything like that. It's simply just a, just a garage.
Easy enough. Any questions?
Me.
Well, it's a corner lot, so, right there.
Right.
You're at a disadvantage.
Yes.
And I don't have any issues with it. Anybody on the board have?
I don't have any questions.
If I can just wait till I hear from the audience, maybe when you're ready.
Well, we're going to...
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, as far as...
Oh, yeah. Sharon?
I see the hardship, so I'm good with it.
All right. Do you want to read in the comments?
Yep. Board of Health, 61 Secolet Island Road, needs floor plans and... This is from the 13th. I have a revised one. Go on, read the first one. Needs floor plans and septic plan. Health Department does not have problem with moving of the building, but does need to know the house floor plans layout and new septic design submitted before building permit issues. Then I have one dated from the 15th, from the Board of Health. 61 Secolet Island Road owner, needs septic plan. Health Department does not have a problem with moving the building, but does need septic design submitted before building permit issue. Existing septic consists of cesspool and is within 50 feet of private well. I have one from... I have one from Conservation has no comment. And then did I have one from Catherine?
You got DPW?
I'm looking.
I don't think there's one from them, is there?
Yeah, they're requiring a, requiring a curb cut permit.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll read it. It's from Catherine, dated Friday, the 17th, to Mary Ann. Reference, 61 Secolet Island Road. The applicant will require a curb cut permit from the DPW. As Secolet Island Road is a town-owned...
Right. And they'll, they'll comply with that. And then Board of Health, we did submit the septic plan this afternoon. I submitted to Mary Ann, and I don't know if you're able to get that over to Board of Health yet or not, but it, it's been submitted. So it's only an improvement going from a cesspool to a, to a septic system.
Is it going D-nit?
This is not a D-nitrification.
Innovative?
No.
Please?
Just an upgrade over a cesspool.
Just a Title V.
That is an upgrade.
Just Title V.
And I say, it's not in a, not in a wetland resource area.
Okay. Any other comments? Anybody on the board? Anybody in the audience have any comments on this? Okay. Seeing none, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I would. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to Elise S. and David J. De Cecilio of 61 Secolet Island Road. Said written finding is under section 174-17 in the zoning bylaw to allow for a relocation of existing single-family dwelling and construction of a garage and property located in R3 zoning district, MAP 119, parcel 3, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. One, the board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. general law 48, section 6. Two, site plan prepared for David De Scilio, 61 Secolet Island Road, Mashpee, Mass., scale 1 inches, 10 feet, date April 27, 2022. Signed and stamped by Gary S. Labrie, number 40039, date 1/25/23. Floor plan prepared by Katuah Bay Design LLC. Scale quarter inch equals 1 foot, date 12/12/2022. Drawing number A1, first floor, second floor, plan A2, front and right, left and rear elevations. Four, condition all town departments read into the record. Five, any changes to plan that require the applicant to return to this board. Six, the board finds that the application submitted under 174-17 will not be substantial or detrimental to the existing non-conforming structure or to the neighborhood, and there, and there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking setbacks as may be required. Number seven, I make specific reference to Board of Health comments that have been read into the record, and specific comments, specific comments made in reference to the DPW's record, comments read into the record, that need to be both satisfied.
Okay, Jim seconds. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want me to get down and come back up?
So, House, so you're fully aware of the new lot coverage regulations, right?
Oh, I, I, I feel like I inspired it.
There you go. I'm just checking, is people come forward?
No, absolutely. Well aware.
Might as well. Sorry. It's unbelievable. My promise is...
Okay. All right. Thank you. I did some of this stuff. Okay, I got the one. Yeah.
It's unbelievable. My promise is something.
Okay. All right. Bob, you're gonna sit on the next hearing. Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
Five Shore Drive, owners Desmond M. and Joan H. Kelly request a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing non-conforming single-family residential dwelling with a single-family residential dwelling or property located in the R3 and the Pompaneset Overlay District, map 112, parcel 73, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain representing Desmond and Joan Kelly. As the hearing notice reflects, they are speaking, seeking a special permit pursuant to section 174-17.1 to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure and replacing that with a, a new single-family structure located within the Pompaneset Overlay District and located at Five Shore Drive. This is a structure that was originally built in the 1920s. It is non-conforming in only one aspect, and that is to the rear property line here. So at present, it sits only 3.8 feet from the rear property line. The new structure will be, will not create any new non-conformity. So we will maintain all the setbacks to the side and to the, the front. And we are improving the setback to the rear. So we're going from 3.8 to 11.8. So we're improving that non-conformity by approximately eight feet. The lock, this, as I point out, we're no conservation issues. We're not in any wetland area. We're not in any, under any land subject to coastal storm flowage. So our lot area and our lot coverage are all based on upland area. So our, as I said, we're going from 3.8 feet to 11.8 feet in the rear and our lock coverage is increasing to 20.9%, but still under the 25% allowed in the Pompaneset Overlay District. As the board knows, under section 174-17.1, there are three criteria for approval. The first is that there are no new non-conformities being created. Again, in this case, we are not creating any new non-conformities. There's sufficient parking. Residential districts houses require two spaces and we have parking here sufficient for two, at least two cars. And the final is that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. I would submit to the board that we are, we are not going to be substantially more detrimental than what currently exists for the following reasons. First is that you're going to replace a 1920s non-building code compliant building with a code compliant, a building code compliant new structure. The second is that we are improving the one non-conformity going from 3.8 to 11.8. And I would also point out that really the only thing that is going to be non-conforming at this stage is the stairs. Basically, the whole structure is going to be pretty close to the setback line. And I know you don't have the colored version, but if you look at this triangle here, that's all existing structure that's within the setback and that's all going to be removed out of the setback area. So really, when you look at my green line, that's basically right along the 1415 setback line and that's where the structure is. And as I say, most of that's going to be stairs. The stairs are going to be mostly where there is existing structure already. And again, the house itself, a lot of that's going to be removed from that corner. So again, that's an improvement over what, what exists. And finally, I would point the board to a couple of houses in the area. Eight Shore Drive, which is approximately across, diagonally across the street, which is similar in style and scope. And also on the other side of this neighbor, across Cordwood, at 9 Cordwood is a, you know, is a new single-family, you know, similar in size and scope. So on that basis, I would ask the board, or suggest to the board that they could make a finding of substantially not more detrimental and approve this, approve the project under 174-17.1. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those. Also, our architect is here, Eka, she's in the back to answer any architectural questions that they may come up.
And the height of this project is going to be what?
It's under 30 feet, but I can have Eka come and confirm that. And the Pompaneset Overlay District at 30 feet maximum height.
Correct.
That's, that's the maximum.
Yep, come on.
Pompaneset 30.
Yeah, 30 feet, yeah. And the Pompaneset Overlay District is 30 feet.
Sorry, apologize.
And for the record, what's your full name?
My name is Ekaterina Labovich.
And what firm?
I work for Architect Associates in Katuah.
Thank you.
So we are two feet below the 35 allowed, 35 allowed?
30.
30. So we are at 28 feet.
Okay. No problem with that coupler? Is that what it's called?
Yeah, that's fine.
It's kind of a sloping lot, isn't it, towards the street?
Yes, that is correct. So it is, if you look at, if you look at Facing Shore Drive, and I think if you see in my written presentation, you know, the photos looking at the street, yes, it does slope to the front. And again, you know, we're conforming here. So anything beyond this red line on the plan would require a variance anyway. So we can't, you know, we can't move any, anymore forward.
Okay. Lot of issues over there with flooding. How are you going to keep the water on the lot?
No, what they're talking about.
Dry wells?
Um...
Not depicted on the plan.
Yes, I...
You're gonna put them in, right?
Yes, we will contain all, it can be certainly be a condition of the permit if the board was to approve it, to contain all roof runoff stormwater on-site.
All on-site water contained on-site, not just roof water, right?
Correct. So dry wells.
I'm just looking if there's any.
And I think the driveway's gravel, so it wouldn't be pavement.
It's gonna remain gravel, right?
That is what it, it's a portion of gravel driveway to remain, yes.
So we remain gravel?
Yes. That is correct.
May I ask you a question?
Please.
So just for clarity, right now, there is a pre-existing non-conformity, which is a rear yard setback.
That is correct.
That is the only non-conformity?
That is correct.
That non-conformity will remain?
Yes, but it will be improved.
But it will remain?
Yes. That is correct.
You're not creating any new non-conformity?
That is correct.
Including banal limited to lock.
That is correct.
What is the proposed lock coverage?
20.9%.
And they are allowed 25%.
Yeah, Pompaneset, Pompaneset Overlay District is 25%.
Correct. So just to make sure, so the rear yard setback is being improved, it's the only non-conformity and there's no other non-conformity?
That is correct.
Height's covered?
Yes. So the existing lock coverage is 14.1%, which is conforming and again, 20.9%, which is conforming, is the proposed.
And how many stories? Two and a half?
Two.
Two.
Two stories and less than 30 feet.
Correct.
28 feet.
Is there a limit to the number of bedrooms? Three?
I don't know. You gotta look at Board of Health.
Yes, three bedrooms, right.
Three bedrooms from Board of Health.
Existing three bedrooms, that won't change.
Any questions by anybody on board? Sharon?
No, I'm good. Do you want me to read it? Okay. Board of Health, Five Shore Drive. The proposed raise and replace of the existing dwelling requires the following tasks to be completed. A septic inspection of the existing septic system, a disposal works construction permit from the Board of Health to move and replace the existing septic tank, and a road inspection by the Board of Health agent. The requirements shall be performed and submitted to the Board of Health prior to the issuance of a building permit. The existing septic permit states that a three-bedroom septic is provided. The property is in a zone two, so the dwelling is restricted to three bedrooms. If the, if using the existing septic, then elevation of pipe leaving the foundation to the tank need to be shown, showing at least 2% slope. Conservation, not wetlands jurisdiction.
I don't think I have it. Is a letter?
Yeah, I have the letter.
Oh, the letter. I forgot.
All right. I have a letter dated Tuesday, the 21st. It is from Chris and Mary Coffey to the zoning Board of Appeals. We, Christopher and Mary Ann Coffey, are the owners of 8 Cordwood Road in Pompaneset. We are direct abuddists to the Kellys on Five Shore Drive. We live directly behind them. We have owned our Pompaneset property since 1995. We own a 600 square foot cottage with a large deck in the back where we spend most of our time. We have enjoyed our time in Pompaneset immensely and value the friendships we have with our neighbors. As a testament to this, when the Kellys requested a variance for a small, single-story rear addition to their home years ago, we did not contest. Unfortunately, the reality of this meant more television noise and overheard conversations. Now we have been informed by a letter from the Mashpee Board of Appeals that the Kellys are building a new home. This proposed home appears to be more than twice the current size, almost twice as tall, and is clearly non-conforming. As designed, the foundation will encroach within the 15-foot legal, the 15-foot setback by seven feet in the back adjacent to our property line. This proposed house will tower over our cottage. As we understand, according to the zoning bylaws of the town of Mashpee, no pre-existing non-conforming, single or two-family dwelling structure shall be torn down and rebuilt on any lot unless there is issuance of a special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals. Such a permit may be granted only if the zoning Board of Appeals finds that any changes, extensions, alterations, or reconstruction of the pre-existing non-conformities are substantially more detriment, not substantially more detrimental than existing, that exist prior to removal of the existing structure and that there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking. Upon our inspection of the Kelly site plan and the house plans, which were made available to us today by the building department, there is no way the above requirement can be met. The new home is designed today, new home as designed today will be substantially more detrimental than the single family that exists today. We believe that if the ZBA were to review the existing home compared to the new proposed home, taking into account the new design, setbacks, building heights, layout, et cetera, the ZBA would come to the same conclusion. To be clear, we are not opposed to the Kellys building a new home. Unfortunately, they did not talk to us as they designed their new home. Inspection of the Kelly's plans seemed to indicate inability to move the encroaching foundation forward toward the street, and we believe the house design could easily be modified to comply with the rear setbacks of 15 feet. A variance to this 15-foot setback implies a hardship, and we see no hardship that prevents moving the foundation forward to meet Mashpee code. Summers on the Cape in Pompaneset are glorious and all to greet. Again, we have a small property, best enjoyed outdoors on our back deck and want as much of a buffer as legally entitled. We respectfully request that the Mashpee zoning appeals deny the Kellys' request for a variance to the 15-foot rear setback. Sincerely, Chris and Mary, Mary Ann Coffey.
So.
Tell me about the parking.
Yep. So there is the driveway here and residential zone only requires two spaces and only a space, spots for two cars.
Okay. Would you like to respond to this?
Or...
Well, I just wanted to say that the people who wrote that letter, the abuddists at 8 Cordwood Road, the Coffees, they came into my office yesterday to discuss this plan. They're sitting in the, in the audience tonight. And basically, what they were concerned about is the intensity increase with, with the porch and the, and the second level. I thought, I know that it's not against any rules, but I was wondering if, if the compromise could, to keep peace in the neighborhood and do the neighborly thing, maybe they could move this whole wing up to make that 7.9 setback to 10 feet, which is, which is still non-conforming. But I think they would have less, less objection to what's going on and maybe they could, and be more, less obtrusive to them.
May I add to that?
And that's, that's only if, if, if your client is willing to do so.
Right.
I would ask, the size of the house, why not just, and I understand the non-conforming, I understand you have a right to continue, continue non-conforming. For me, why don't you just make it conforming? Then there's no issue. For me, that means this house conforms in all aspects. It's a big house for the lot. And I understand the lock coverage, it meets lock coverage, period. I get it. It would have been, for me, as one person, it would make it so much easier for me to say yay, if in fact you could stand there and say, everything conforms. Because you know what? If you're gonna build this house today and that lot today, you wouldn't be in front of this board. You'd be just getting a building miffed.
That's true, but that...
That's my attitude.
But that goes for every raise and rebuild that I bring before.
No, no, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. Because there are, you know, I can, no, I disagree.
Not many people write letters.
I disagree. I disagree. I gotta tell you, in this scenario, the size of this house, when you're talking two or three feet in the back, back, my God, that's not a lot to ask for when you're looking at the size of this house.
Well, I would just, I guess my position would be, you know, given where it is now, you know, at 3.8 feet, I think, you know, making it eight feet is, you know, pretty substantial. And again, what we're looking at, that's really the encroachment, is, is the stairs. It's not the structure. And we're taking a lot of the structure out of that setback.
I'm just telling you where I'm coming from. If it meets the 15-foot rear yard setback, and I understand...
And we can't move the house forward because then we would need a variance.
I, and I, I'm not asking you to do that. I think that's a poor thing to do.
I think that you could just move that whole wing forward and not lose any square footage. I know you want to get the square footage for your client, but...
There's a leaching field and a septic in front of the house where we'd put some boundaries. How much we can move the house?
How much? No. So I'm looking, I'm, the way I, I thought of it is this whole wing here can just come forward to the front. This, from, from the 13.5 to the 11.8 and the 7.9, if you move that up three feet, you're, you know, it would be 10 foot nine where the stairs are. And you can just put it beside, you have the room to move it up front. And you wouldn't lose any square footage.
You wouldn't lose any square footage, I don't think. But if you move the stairs here, I think you'd lose, and Eka could, would lose a, a win, a couple of windows and some doors. So, you know, the design would change.
I'm thinking that where you're the 1.8 feet, see where that depicted at the 1.8, that jog, 1.8?
11.8, you mean?
No. So the 7.9, 5.1, you see the 7.9 setback and then the 5.1s? If you go from that 1.8 jog straight across, then you got your 15-foot setback and you're done.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. With the jog in the front there, the 6.5, the 6.5 in the front.
here can just come forward to the front. From, from the 13.5 to the 11.8 and the 7.9, if you move that up three feet, you're, you know, it, it would be 10-foot 9 where the stairs are, and you can just put it beside, you have the room to move it up front, and you wouldn't lose any square footage.
You wouldn't lose any square footage, I don't think, but if you move the stairs here, I think you'd lose, Eka could, would lose a, a win, couple of windows and some doors, so, you know, the design would change.
I'm thinking that where you're, the 1.8 feet, see where that depicted at the 1.8, that jog, 1.8?
11.8, you mean?
No, so the 7.9, 5.1, you see the 7.9 setback and then the 5.1s?
Yes.
If you go from that 1.8 jog straight across, then you got your 15-foot setback and you're done.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, that where the jog in the front there, the 6.5, the 6.5 in the front, all I'm saying.
See, I'm just, look at what they-
Walk and show.
You got here, you got, this is the window, you got a hallway, dead-end hallway, and then you can lower it, and if you can move this over and move this flush right up to here, and you can, you can stay with them front.
I'm less worried about square footage, just go right across here and there. You've got your 15-plus feet right across the back. I mean, the size of that house, if you think about it, just go right from there.
And you're probably there. You can add three feet.
And there's no issue.
And then two foot.
But again, it's, it's not something, it would be something-
No, I didn't want to run. Right.
Can we make this more square?
I'm only one vote, I'm just speaking my, my piece. I can tell you that for me, the size of this house and the lot, if you're able to go see the zoning force or the building inspector imply for a billing without having to come to this board, I'm totally in favor of it, because you're so darn close to making it in total compliance.
Well, I have to come before you no matter what, because it's a non-conforming. I have to get a special permit no matter what.
No, well, I'm just saying that, let's just say at a vacant lot.
Correct.
You came to that gentleman right there, and you went to him, you wouldn't have to come to this board. The only thing you'd have to change is that one setback.
That's correct.
That's how I'd like to be.
You know, they have to live there. And they get neighbors, so.
Correct.
If it, if it were like you had four non-conformities and you're improving one or two, and then, you know how the normal applications go? I'm talking about one non-conforming, and it's only two or three feet, and the reality to make it so that conforms, so there's one person's board, I could sit there and say, you know what? If the vac, if the lot was vacant, you would have a right to come in and file for a billing bid and obtain it, subject to all the rules and regulations that apply, you know, for billing bid, but you wouldn't have to come to this board.
That's correct.
It's just so close.
They still need to come to the board.
If, if-
Well, because it's a tip.
If the neighbors want to speak, I don't think they need to, to have it come to conformity in the rear, but they would rather just see less relief if they want to come up and speak.
Chris, do you think maybe you should talk to your client?
Given the temperature of the board, I would.
I'm only one member, but four other members may be totally fine with that.
Well, one member say, you know, doesn't give me a lot of wiggle room with the other members, so.
I just did.
You might want to talk to your client.
Okay, understood. I'll let the, if anybody has any comments?
Anybody in the audience? Have a seat? Just give us your name and address.
Thank you, I'm Chris Coffey, my wife is Mary Ann, and we are at eight Cordwood Road. And we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you.
Pull the microphone up closer.
So, I, I think the letter is fairly self-explanatory. It's a small cottage, we spend a lot of time in the back, and we have a very amicable relationship with the Kellys. We, we get along well, they're, they're a great family, we've, we've always gotten along, our kids have grown up together. Our, our main issue is that with the cottage being as small as it is, it's, you know, it's 600 square feet, when it's nice, we want to be outside, in the yard, and what we've got is a new house, and, and we're happy for the Kellys, they're moving down there, we want them to, to be in a nice house. We don't begrudge them at all. But the reality of this thing is it's going from one story to two stories, and it's doubling in size. It's about a 1,400 square foot house, and it's going to go to a 3,000 square foot house. And that essentially is like putting a 30-foot wall right at our property line, and it's right where we spend our time when we're down there, unless it's raining, and then we'll cuddle up in our cottage, and that's fine. But, but when it's not raining, it's sort of, if we're not at the beach, it's where we want to be, and it's just so close. And I have some pictures, I don't know if you're interested in seeing it, but it sort of shows you, and, and the fact that it was three feet wasn't such a big deal in a one-story house that was smaller, but, but what they're proposing, they give some relief to that, but only in effect if you take into the account the stairs, it's only about four feet of relief. And 30-foot two-story walls going up is really very intrusive on our privacy, and we understand setbacks are designed to ensure privacy for the abutters, maintain a certain character to the neighborhood, and also protect the environment. And we just feel that our privacy is really being affected by the current design. What we would ask is what has been mentioned here, we would ask that the house simply be moved to code. And perhaps if, if they couldn't agree to all the movement, at least a moderate amount of movement would, would mean a great deal to us. Would you, would you care to see the pictures? Yeah.
Sure.
This, this is our, I, I want a plaque on this that says Historical Pompanessett Cottage, because we're very proud of it, and then this is just, the other two pictures are looking at our, at our rear lot line at the Kellys' house.
Well, would you be more comfortable if the stairs were setback at 10 feet or better?
We, we would be a lot more comfortable with that.
So, so bringing it to conformity is, I mean, you just want-
Conformity would be ideal, but, but, you know, I, in order to prevent, you know, a three-year ordeal and lawyers and getting all that involved, there is some way that I think we, we could have that would be reasonable.
Actually, I'm liking conformity.
Okay. It's big, and, you know, and the other thing is, we, if we build, if we use the same right and we build, and we're limited to extending our house back towards that property line in order to maintain our code on the sides, and then that's going to limit, that, that's then going to push our, our patio or whatever it is right up to their property line, which pushes us right to that house.
So we're, as one member, where I'm at right now is to bring the house in conformity as far as no non-conformity whatsoever. That would mean that that rear wall would come, be taken away from the lot, from the lot line another one and a half feet, right? On the left-hand side or you facing it right-hand side. So it would be in conform, minimum of 15 foot all the way across.
I think conformity is good.
My attitude is, for me, as one member, to ask anything more than what an applicant would have to do to, if this lot was vacant, nothing on it, to go to the building inspector and get a building command, height setbacks and everything, that would bring it to that level. Now, he has to still come to this board, so-
It's a knockdown.
Because it's a knockdown, now, raise and replace, so seems as though the board's, it's, the applicant's decision is going to be probably to withdraw and to have a discussion with you. I'm hoping that the discussion go takes, takes the tack, that it's, that it comes into conformity. That's just one vote.
Okay.
But that would be up to you.
Well, I mean, that would be ideal, and we'd certainly love that if the Kellys agreed to that.
I'd be happy with that.
Yes.
That, that's more different.
Taking it into conformity, yes, yeah, we would completely agree. I mean, conformity is conformity.
I would be happy with that also.
Yeah.
Can we just confirm what that is, though? Does it-
Dave, do you want me to show them what I was thinking on that?
May I, may I show them?
Okay. Let me show you what my thoughts were.
Show who?
Still going to be a two-story house.
Show Chris Corain.
Because you're still, that'd be great with the argument.
Of those two Cris's.
So my attitude is this, wherever that, so the 15 feet will come right across like that, I don't believe steps are a part of a setback, correct?
What I do understand, though, is that there are steps, but this is a landing, and I thought landing was, so it still would be in conformity.
Those steps, those steps are not an egress, so they're not a required egress, so they would-
So the steps wouldn't, would not be part of setback?
They would.
Would be.
Those, those particular ones.
So then you're going to have to look at egress, or those steps, that platform.
I'm sorry.
What the zoning enforcement officer is saying is the platform that gives you a 7.9 dimension to your rear yard setback needs to be at 15 feet, so the steps are part of setback, so you could not have the platform there. Am I correct in that statement?
On those, on that particular setback, yes.
Correct. So the, so the platform is part of the-
Because going up means a egress.
Because it's not a required means of egress, it's because it's going up.
If it were, you could then have it at that setback, because it's not part of setback. But because it's an additional means of egress not required, it is then part of setback, so you'd have to do away with that allocation or push it back. I'm saying that the house would be in compliance, so that would be gone, this would go straight across something like that, and you'd have 15 feet in the rear. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have a comment on this?
Anybody else in the audience? Yeah, I think he's coming back. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, I would just, I would request a continuance of the next hearing to allow my, you know, consult with my client.
Now, Jay, is it? Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Chris Corain, attorney for Five Shore Drive's request for a continuance until March, was it 8th?
Yep.
2023.
Great.
Sergeant.
Thank you.
Okay. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Jim?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Nothing to sign yet. Let's collect some papers.
Got a lot of paper in this one.
Oh, yeah.
Nothing to sign, right?
No, just send the papers back.
Here we go. You guys got any more from me?
Bill's going to recuse himself on this, and I'm going to have Charlie and George sit on it, along with-
Who is it? Is it Chris?
Yeah, Chris is.
Oh, got it, got it, got it.
All right, Sharon, go ahead.
228 Waiting Place Road, remand hearing ordered from Land Court Barstool Case Number 21 MISC 000076 KTS dated January 5th, 2023. Petitioner Eprum Aprarium requests a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing non-conforming, single-family residence in a new code-compliant structure or property located in an R3 zoning district in Pompanessett Overlay District, MAP 112, parcel 59, Mashpee Mass. Owner of record, Eprum Aprarium.
Okay. Before we get started, I want to, I want to say something to the audience. Before we start this hearing, I'd like everybody to know that late this morning, I got a call at the 11th hour, basically, to the zoning board, we received a typed 28-page correspondence from Troy Wall Associates, myself speaking for the board. We don't appreciate an 11th hour correspondence giving us no time whatsoever to look at this. This remand hearing was advertised in the Mashpee Enterprise two weeks ago. Can't understand why Troy Wall Associates would wait to the last minute to send in this 28-page typed presentation, and I don't appreciate it. We're going to open this hearing, we're going to listen to both sides of the argument, ask questions, read in-town comments, hear from our abutters, and then we're going to continue this hearing, because the board has not had enough time to look at this information. And again, I'm really disappointed at the way this has gone down. So, Chris, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, again, Attorney Christopher Corain representing Eprum Aprarium, owner of property located at 228 Waiting Place Road. With me tonight is the engineer, Raul Lizardi Rivera, from Cape and Islands Engineering, who I'll have sit with me to certainly answer any questions. So, as the board knows, this is a remand hearing from a decision where the board approved the raise and replace of the dwelling under section 174-17.1 to raise and replace the existing single-family dwelling, again, located in the Pompanessett Overlay District. The board approved the project on January 27th of 2021. That decision was appealed by the abutter, and after hearing on summary judgment, the court issued a judgment, which I know the board is all aware, indicating that the way that we look at lot area and lot coverage needs to conform or take into account all wetland areas as defined under chapter 131, section 40. And more specifically, what hadn't been done in the past was we were not including or not counting land subject to coastal storm flowage, and that was one of the issues on this particular lot, that the majority of the lot is within land subject to coastal storm flowage, so the court remanded it back to the board, and as we've done now, we are now calculating, or deducting, so to speak, land subject to coastal storm flowage from our lot area calculations. In this particular case, this leaves us with an upland lot area of 1,250 square feet, whereas if we were, you know, looking at it the traditional, the old way, the lot was approximately 25,000 square feet. The lot is non-conforming in this, in several areas now. By deducting land subject to coastal storm flowage, we are non-confor, existing non-conforming as to lot coverage, including land subject to coastal storm flowage, we are now non-conforming as to the setback to wetlands, which would basically be zero feet at this, it is zero feet at this stage. And we are also non-conforming as to the front yard setback, which is currently 24.7 feet. And when the original plan was before this board, we had said that there was a non-conformity on this sideline at approximately 10.6, but given the fact that it's, it's a stair, it was stairs that we were measuring to, we've, we've called that a conforming condition. It's 50, the, the structure itself is conforming if we don't count the stairs. So, we're not asking, we're not counting that as a non-conformity, and that was going to be a conforming condition regardless of the stairs being there or not. So, we're considering it a conforming condition, it will continue to be a, a conforming condition under this proposal. So again, the board's charge, I think, was really twofold from the court decision. One first was to make determinations as to lot area and lot coverage and setback to wetlands based on the deduction of land subject to coastal storm flowage. So we have done that. Again, lands, the setback to wetlands is zero. We are within land subject to coastal storm flowage, so we are at zero setback to wetlands, where the requirement is 50. We are calculating the existing lot coverage at 100%. The, the existing structure is larger than the amount of upland area, so we look at it as 100%. The proposed structure will be more than what's exist, more than the upland area, so again, maximum lot coverage is 100%. If we were looking at it at, under the old way, then our lot coverage was existing was 7%, and our proposed would be 11.7%, well under the 25% in the Pompanessett Overlay District, and we do show that on the table of this plan in the left-hand corner. And again, the only other setback that we're non-conforming to is the front yard setback, and that is being intensified by two inches. We're going from 24.7 feet to 24.5 feet, so there's a minor intensification of that setback. The- The, I know, I know, as I said, I had a brief opportunity to look at the letter as much as you did. I know there was a concern or a claim that there's a non-conformity about the amount of stories. So they're saying we're at three stories when, you know, we've always said it at two. And they're counting the land, the, the space underneath the first floor that's between the ground and the pilings. It's just open space. There's no, no basement floor. It's, there's no walls. It's where we have the flood, if a flood came, it'd go right through that.
Wouldn't that be average grade?
No, it's just an open area.
No.
So it's not a sto-
You're talking for height?
Yeah, so, so built, so ground is here.
Correct.
Still, you know, pilings.
Correct.
Two and a half, two-story building.
Correct.
Pilings are eight feet.
Correct.
Three-story building.
Right, but we're talk, no, no, no. You're talking, you're mixing up height and stories.
Devil's advocate in a remand, you know, I'm trying to make sure we don't go through a double remand.
But I think with the position that, we're, we're talking about two different things. There's height, which is thirty feet, and there's stories.
Right, so with that first, with that first, I think it's really-
It's, I mean, I would defer to the-
The boss.
Why don't we ask?
It does mention the stories that the floor, there are floor and there are outside walls. Except neither.
Right.
So I don't know, you could be, you could, it's up, open to interpretation, I would think.
I don't think it's ever been-
They wouldn't do that to us.
I, I don't think it's ever been interpreted-
You're the interpreter.
As a story.
No, I mean, it, it does, I, I read, I read the-
I, I, I read the whole thing tonight, that's why I was late.
If you're, if you're on the ground, I don't know, it's, it's a tough one. Cause what if it's four feet? It's inhabitable space.
Yeah.
So we always, we did look at it as not a story above grid.
Right.
I looked at that in the remand, I also looked at the hundred and nineteen percent. I've always been, I've been of the opinion since this issue came up that you couldn't exceed a hundred percent. But it seems to me, Mr. Wall is saying, hey, a hundred percent of the lot is, is, you know, floodplain, whatever. And the other nineteen percent is the actual structure, so you're at a hundred and nineteen.
Right.
I get his theory, I'm wondering if the judge is gonna buy into that theory? Or if the judge's opinion, he opines to that.
Well, I, I don't know that in the end it, it matters in the sense that it's non-conforming no matter what. So our exist, whether you say it's a hundred, I say it's a hundred percent, or Attorney Wall says it's a hundred and nineteen percent, it's a pre-existing non-conforming condition, okay?
Understood.
So, under the bylaw, we can't create any new non-conformities. So if we were saying at, even counting land subject to coastal flowage, it was fifteen percent, and then we are going to thirty percent, we'd be creating a new non-
I understand. I am a little concerned about that story issue though because you would then be creating a new non-conformity.
That is correct, but again, there's no floor, it's natural ground.
I get it, but-
And it's no walls, there's no found, there's no foundation.
And I actually was reading it and I, I'm not, there's only four, but I couldn't come up with a real answer to that question as to whether it was a story or not.
It's, you know, if it was like two feet, would it be a story about-
That's one thing, but when it's probably eight feet, right?
Probably, yeah.
Then it'd be-
But you, but it's not occupiable. I mean, I think of a story as living space, you know, it's not-
Correct me wrong, you don't want another remand and we don't want another remand, right?
No, I know, but I, we have to be. I mean, one is we have to comply with the coastal, you know, coastal floodplain regulations and-
More importantly for me is it's a learning curve and every day I'm on this board, every meeting, I learn something new, basically, just about. So that being said-
This was never an issue that was raised prior to this night and it wasn't raised in the court case.
We didn't consider the story then, I, I don't, I wouldn't consider the story now.
Right.
Let's leave it at that.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So that was, you know, so that's, you know, so we, we're not contending that there are any new non-conformities being created. Cause again, your lot coverage is currently non-conforming, your setback to wetland is currently non-conforming, and your front yard setback is currently non-conforming. So when we, you know, and I say to the board again, you know, this project was approved by this board prior. You know, so there's already been, I think, a thought that it's not substantially more detrimental in that case. But, that being said, again, that was the first real meat of the court's decision was that, you know, you need to make the accurate calculations of lot area, lot coverage and, and setback to wetlands, which I think we've discussed now. The second issue was making specific findings to support a argument that it is not substantially more detrimental than, than the neighborhood. And in my written presentation and what I'll say tonight is that I think we make a compelling case that this structure is not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists in these fashion. Again, there are no, there are no new non-conformities being created. There is sufficient parking on site, there's a garage. The structure, which was built in nineteen forty-nine, is not building code compliant. The new structure will be building code compliant. The structure built in nineteen forty-nine is not flood zone compliant, it sits on the ground. The new structure will be up on pilings and will be flood zone compliant. This project, and I can't emphasize enough, was approved by the Conservation Commission on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. So the Conservation Commission is well aware that this structure was being proposed in its scope and size within land subject to coastal storm flowage. So regardless of how the, the zoning board may have interpreted, you know, that, that is a wetland resource area within, you know, the Concombs jurisdiction. And they approved the project stating that there was no adverse impact. As part of this project, there is approximately eighteen hundred square feet of mitigation plantings that don't exist tonight, today. There is an additional hundred square feet of restoration plantings on site. I would also say that the expansion is consistent with other buildings in the neighborhood, specifically the one right across the street at two twenty Waiting Place Way, which is much larger than this structure. And I, you know, gave photographs of that structure, as I say, directly across the street, which is larger than this structure. And I would say, you know, again, this project is consistent with what this board has approved in, recently, in land subject to coastal storm flowage. You know, again, I, the old way, we are under, well under what would have been allowed in the Papanesett Overlay District. So we are not creating the so-called McMansion, which I know some of the board members are concerned about. So again, you know, I had a brief opportunity to review Attorney Wall's letter. You know, the first, the first issue that I would, you know, the first thing that I would take issue is, he makes a comment that the, the judge basically invalidated the bylaw, one seventy-four dash seventeen point one. And I think that's, you know, I hate to say it, it's a, it's a mischaracterization of what the, what the judge said in his, in his decision. If you read the court's decision on page fourteen, it's the last page, says, "Thus on remand, when making a finding on the substantially more detrimental element of one seventy-four seventeen point one, the board must consider whether a premium's proposed structure as a pre-existing non-conforming structure will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood." That's what the court has instructed the board to do. It has not invalidated one seventy-four dash seventeen point one. It just says that when you make this decision, you need to do it in, within the confines of a substantially more detrimental, and not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And again-
But, but Mr. Wall was able to obtain that under a summary judgment.
On the, no, no, I know.
I'm somewhat amazed with that.
I am as well.
So, but that sends a message to me that says like, you didn't even get to be heard, other than your, your notes in the defense.
Correct.
So I'm paying very close attention. I read it very carefully, that's why I was late. I read it three times.
Yeah, understood.
And so, I'm not a judge, but, you know, as a member of the board, I feel like we're compelled by a judge.
Yes.
And so in reading that, there are some things very much deeply embedded in that document that we need to be very closely attentive to.
Right, absolutely. And again, I don't, I'm, I'm saying, you know, again, when, when the letter says it's invalidating the bylaw, that's not the case.
I, I don't, I don't agree with Mr. Wall's, you know, opinion of various aspects of it. But there are some things of it that, that kind of opened my eyes.
Right, but again, substantially not more detrimental to the neighborhood is no different than the finding you make under one seventy-four seventeen. So there's nothing unusual about that portion of the, of the judge's decision. Again, I think that's just, you just have to make your decision informed in, on that basis. You know, the, the other thing that I would point out from the judge's decision on page twelve, it says, "On remand, the board must state its findings about whether the project meets requirements of the raise and replace bylaw, one seventy-four dash seventeen point one." "In making these required findings, the board must apply the definitions of lot area, lot coverage, and setback from wetlands contained in the Mashpee zoning bylaw. Any portion of a premium's property that is characterized as land subject to coastal storm flowage should be deducted from the calculation of lot area, lot coverage, before determining whether a premium satisfies one seventy-four dash seventeen point one. Similarly, the board must address the setback to wetlands requirement of one seventy-four thirty-three." So again, we've shown that on the plan. You know, given that we're calculating it, so zero to wetlands and, you know, a hundred percent, you know, lot, you know, lot area is twelve fifty, a hundred percent lot coverage existing and proposed. So, you know, there's no, you know, we're not trying to, we're, we're complying with what I think the judge's charge to us was on that particular issue. And then finally, I think it's important to note from the court's decision, on remand, "The board may conclude that the lot area, lot coverage, and the setback to wetlands for a premium's existing house are lawful pre-existing non-conformities, in addition to side yard and front yard non-conformities reciting as first decision." If that is the case, the raise and replace bylaw allows changes to those non-conformities so long as the project does not create any new non-conformities and otherwise meets the requirements of one seventy-four dash seventeen point one, which anytime I'm before this board, going under this bylaw, we recite. No new non-conformities created, sufficient parking, and not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So again, given the land subject to coastal storm flowage, we're not creating any new non-conformities. It's a non-conforming condition now and it'll be a non-conforming condition after. There is a garage, so there's sufficient parking. And again, I've enumerated, you know, numerous reasons why this is better than what's existing to the neighborhood. Again, it's, you know, and I think one in itself is the fact that it's gonna be up on pilings and it's gonna conform to flood zone regulations. As of right now, if that house has a big storm, it's gonna wash away right into the neighbor's, neighbor's house. So, with that, you know, again, I, if the board has any specific questions for me or Raul, I'm happy to do that. I know the board is gonna continue the, continue the hearing anyway, so I'm not going to belabor my points. But, you know, I think, I think this project can still be approved just as it was before, that this board did at the last hearing. At the last time around, I don't think anything in the judge's decision compels the board to find any differently. The board just needs to make the findings, needs to make the specific findings and make the calculations consistent with, with, with the judge, you know, the judge's interpretation, that's all.
What's the total height of the building?
It is twenty-nine point two feet.
Is that from existing ground?
Yes.
Including pilings?
Yes, it has to be from existing grade.
So the only question you really have is whether it's three feet.
After we, yeah, I've read, there's three or four questions. I, I don't, I would say the following, it may make sense if we have the right to do so. First of all, you have an opinion from town council, we might wanna go in executive session and add some, some discussion about it because I frankly feel summary judgment is
Well, I mean, I guess I would say that the, the fact that it went to summary judgment was basically on the interpretation issue. And that's a legal issue as opposed-
Well, it was on the facts of law, right? I mean, the judge sat there and said, here's the facts that I see. I mean, he put it right in his, in his decision. Here are the facts, boom, 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 boom.
Right.
So I don't, I didn't even need to hear from Mr. Corain.
All right.
All right, isn't that what he said?
Well, cause the facts, basically the facts are agreed to in this particular case because it's the size of the structure, the setbacks.
He's also saying, you know, he went through all the things and he mentioned, he said, based on the facts, okay, I do not need to hear anymore. I'm issuing summary judgment. When I see summary judgment, it's like, it's a biggie.
But I would caution the board that the summary judgment was not on the merits of the project.
No, I'm not saying it was, but it was on the approval process of the project. It was in reference to how we approved it.
Correct.
And, and so we need to look at those various aspects of our approval process and correct them if need to be corrected.
Correct, which we are doing-
So we don't duplicate our mistakes.
Correct, absolutely, I agree a hundred percent.
The judge said we made a mistake.
I understand that and I agree a hundred percent. And that's why on this project and the project that came before you that I brought before on Waterway and the project that we brought before you on Clover, we've adhered to what the board has asked and what the judge's-
Exact, since we've heard from the judge, we've changed the way we've done things.
Correct.
Okay, we've been doing it for a while that way and no one even, I didn't know it, if I would have known, I would have done it differently.
Correct.
I'm sure Jonathan would have as the chairman.
Right.
But my point is, is I think this board needs to get, get some, gain some knowledge and, and do some research, have a discussion, probably, you know, close doors if we legally can do that, and then, and then come up with something in relation to this situation.
I think, I mean, I think you can because this is litigation and executive session is one of the reasons for litigation. You know, litigation is one of the things you can bring-
Again, I just don't, I just don't wanna, again, I'm not, I'm not the chairman.
I mean, I understand, I mean, I know that, you know, obviously you've got a lot of information that came before you, some of it, you know, today and-
Let's hear from the other side. From what I hear though, part of what we're required to do is to make specific findings that apparently were not made before, which would support the ultimate decision that we made.
That is part of it, yes.
Yeah, so that's-
That is part of the judge's remand.
So the, the summary judgment could have been because no specific findings were made, which is why-
Well, he makes note of a couple of other things that quite concern me. So I think there's gotta be a change of philosophy and I, I just, I don't wanna go too deep in it. It's just I spent a lot of time reading it and reading it word by word by word by word and then reading it again word by word. Because this, you know, when you get it, you know, no better than I, by a million percent better than I do, reading a legal document is, I'm not a lawyer, I don't-
No, understood.
I'm trying to be a lawyer, but-
But I think Charlie's right in the sense that, you know, the judge did, you know, remand it back because when you approve something, you know, especially something like this, they're asked, you know, specific findings. And even now that I, when I come before this board, I'm giving you those, you know, giving you suggested findings of why it's not substantially more detrimental.
I don't drink, but when you get a summary judgment, I've been doing this for fifty-one years, you go to have a drink when you win that summary judgment. And when you get a summary judgment against you, you go to have a couple more drinks. It's not good, so.
No, it's not. But again, I, I would just say that it's, the merit, I would say the, the judge did not get to the merits of the project, so.
I understand, I'm, I'm, I'm shutting my mouth.
Thank you. Okay, anybody in the audience?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Brian Wall, I'm an attorney in Sandwich and I represent the Butters Andrew Family Trust. I know the board's gonna continue this, so I'm not gonna go deep at length. But I'd like to just start, personal privilege, defend my reputation, Mr. Ferbush. After the court made its ruling, Attorney Corain and I did talk. And he actually asked me whether I was available on this night so that this date could be picked. And I said, yes, I am. I then emailed Mary Ann a number of times saying, has anything new been filed? Has anything new been filed? I first saw the site plan last Wednesday and I first got the narrative that's, that's before the board on Friday. So I've only had since Friday to respond and I got my letter in about noon today. So I did the best that I could. Secondly, it's a ten-page letter with a copy of the judgment, so it's, it's not really twenty-eight pages. So I just think it's fair that I did try as hard as I could to get the letter in. I also emailed it to Attorney Corain in advance and I emailed it to Attorney Costello as well. So, having said that, let me begin by saying the following, my, my view about what happened. So this particular house or property has four non-conformities. The lot is undersized when it's calculated correctly. It's, does not comply with the front yard setback. It does not comply with the setback to wetlands and it does not comply with lot coverage. This project came before the board previously, the board did approve it. There were some disagreements over what lot coverage was all about and what wetlands were all about. And the court has ruled that under the definitions, wetlands includes land subject to coastal storm flowage. And, and that's not me saying that, that's not my client saying that. That's what your bylaw says and that's what the town meeting enacted. And actually, in my research for preparing for this hearing, I went back through many of the town meetings and I saw that at, in two thousand and eighteen, actually, there was a proposal to remove the setback to wetlands, section one, one seventy-four thirty-three from the bylaw, but the town meeting defeated that. And what that tells me is that the town meeting wants the Conservation Commission to regulate wetlands and it also wants you to regulate wetlands. And that fifty-foot setback is regulated from a zoning perspective. So anyway, getting back to my presentation, the way my clients view the project is that it is to replace a single-story modest cottage that's one thousand one hundred and seventy-five square feet in size. And, I'm sorry, seven, it was one thousand seven hundred and forty-nine square feet in size. And adding one thousand one hundred and seventy-five square feet, in other words, adding sixty-seven percent to the footprint and then going up two additional levels to a total of three levels so that there'll be a six thousand square foot home versus what's there now. of three levels so that there'll be a 6,000-square-foot home versus what's there now. The court did, as I said earlier, rule that land subject to coastal storm flowage is a wetland and has remanded it. And so I have in my letter, and I'll just summarize it so that I know there's going to be a, a further hearing, I have five different arguments that I'd like the board to consider. The first of which is what attorney Corrine referenced, my argument about that the bylaw has been essentially invalidated. So when one files an appeal to Superior Court or the land court, it's called judicial review. The court reviews the actions of the, of the zoning board and then issues a ruling. Only town meeting can actually enact bylaws or amend them. And it's, it's very similar to, on the national level. The Supreme Court of the United States engages in judicial review, they, it reviews the laws passed by Congress, and it says whether the law passes muster or not, and if it doesn't, it goes back to Congress. The, the Supreme Court does not change the law. At the municipal level, town meeting is the legislative body. They vote on, on bylaws. In a careful review, the judge's decision says that 174.17.1 is contrary to general law, chapter 48, section 6. Accordingly, and, and the judge actually suggested to make it conform rather than comparing the proposed structure with the previously existing structure, which is what the bylaw says. The court said it should say compared to the neighborhood because that's what the state statute says. So what the court is saying is that a phrase has to be inserted into the bylaw in, in order to make it conform to state law. And my argument is only town meeting can do that. So...
Do you want to take these point by point, or you want to give comments at the end?
I have five separate arguments.
Wait till the end.
Well, I was...
I, I tend to disagree with what you're saying.
Why don't we do it point by point, because, and I can just go from...
So I disagree that it's in nonconformity with 48, section 6. I think, I believe what the judge is saying is, you've got 48, section 6 over here, zoning enabling act, I get it, know it pretty well, lived by it for years, many years, and so it would be nice to have this in total conformity. But as a community, we do not have to conform with state statute or state zoning violations, state zoning enabling act. We do not. We can, in our own, say that we could have made that raise and replace that said, it's not more detrimental excluding the neighborhood if we chose to. Could we not have?
So I think...
No, could we not have?
Well, I'm going to answer the question this way. I think that what your point is, the way I understand it is, the zoning enabling act, the zoning act is an enabling act that allows every town to adopt its own rules, and that's why every town in Massachusetts has a different character because local input and control. However, the zoning enabling act is a floor, and in this particular case, what we're talking about is protections of nonconformities. And the case law, and I, I have the quote here, it says, "A municipality's bylaw may not afford fewer protections to pre-existing nonconforming structures than does the governing statute." And I think what the land court in this particular case was saying is that when the bylaw says compared to the, the proposed with the previous, previously existing structure, that that was not as protective as the state statute, and therefore, in this case, the town needs to make it conform.
I, I think when you go back, Raul...
But, but actually, Mr. Bonby, if I may make an extra, extra point on here, this is exactly, though, why I think it has to go back to town meeting, because what the court, in my view, is saying, and, and I, and let me just quote, quote, is contrary to GL, chapter 48, section 6. So this is not my opinion, that's what the court said. But to your point about the bylaw, now that the court, in my view, has invalidated it, I think it needs to go back to town meeting, and town meeting might take this direction and say, well, the court said we have to add the phrase "to the neighborhood" to be conforming with state law, but maybe we want to add other language, too, to make, to put Mashpee's touch on it. That, that, that's quite possible. And that's why courts don't write bylaws. Courts declare them valid or invalid.
I understand your theory. I don't concur with your theory, but I'm not an attorney, but I don't concur. I, I just don't want to spend all this...
And, and you know, I, I frankly, honestly agree. I know, I don't want to debate this. This is a very hyper-technical legal argument. I did try to reach out to town council today to give him a heads up that I was going to make this argument, and I wanted to talk to him about it.
That's certainly where it's going to end.
Yeah, and he'll, I'm sure he and I will have a, a talk about it at some point between now and the next hearing on this matter. But anyway, my, that's my point on argument number one, so if it's okay, I can just move on to the next one, because I think you're probably going to consult with your town attorney with that. My next argument is, is that the lot coverage calculations shown on the plan this time are still incorrect, and they're incorrect in two different ways. One is not in my letter, so I'm going to say this one verbally because I picked up on it after the fact. There's been an argument made tonight that there's this whole conversation about the new and the old way. I think the court was just correcting an error in interpretation before because now the court is saying land subject to coastal storm flowage is a wetland, and it has to be excluded from lot coverage calculations, and it has to be considered when you get into the 174-33 setback issues. But the argument is still being made, well, under the old analysis, existing is 7%.
Not, not my intent.
No, but, and, and I'm not attacking you, Mr. Bonby, this is...
No, I think it's a point, I think we can stop this real quick. All that I wanted to do, there's only one way, which is the way the judge pointed it out, in my opinion, which is clear, in my opinion, when you look at the bylaw itself, he is correct, I get it. So that's the only way to figure lot coverage. I just want on a plan, as one member, what we would use if it were just building and lot, taking out that equation, that, so don't call it new and old, call it the right way and the old way. How's that?
Okay. So there's a right way and there's an old way, and then I, I want to clarify my comment.
It just gives you more knowledge.
Yeah, I'm just trying to gain some intelligence as to what in comparison does this lot, what does it look like from a lot compared to the structure? What is that percentage-wise? Now, the zoning, the bylaw, raise and replace, has no reference to that, and it is, and it has to include or exclude, all right, the, the wetland protection property, you know, land coastal flooding. I get it. So that's the correct way.
Right.
But, but I still want, you could take, it is not, it was wrong language saying old and new, right? But it's still, no matter how you look at it, it's the way we've done it for some time. But I'd still like to have that on the plan when it's applied for, okay, when the application's made, so that I can understand how much of the lot is being covered by a structure from me.
I, I understand that, that's...
That's all. It has nothing to do with per se zoning. It has nothing to do with compliance of zoning or, or pre-existing conformity or nonconformity.
Certainly.
But it has to do with my theory of my thinking.
Okay. So then, just, I have a technical correction that I'd submit respectfully about the plan. It contains a note that says lot upland area 25,000 square feet, and then it, based on that, it calculates lot coverage at 7% existing and 12% proposed. But there's about 10,000 square feet of coastal dune, coastal beach, and salt marsh, and then there's another 11,000 feet of land subject to coastal storm flowage. So my point is, is that statement about uplands is incorrect. Minor point. My more significant point...
No, no, I think that's a major point, though. Because that, does that not affect lot coverage as per the judge?
It absolutely affects lot coverage.
Well, that's a major, that's a major point.
Well, I was trying to make the point that there's different wetlands on here, and you were trying to say that there's a new and the old way.
No, no, I've said that under the state statute, what is it, section?
131, section 40.
Section 40. Under that state statute, whatever property lies within that zone, within that jurisdiction, should be excluded from lot coverage, period.
Correct.
And I've read it, and I have a picture written in my phone. I actually took a picture so that I can read it every time an applicant comes in here, you know, what things need to be excluded. So if those things are not excluded on this application to that, as submitted to that, then it's incorrect.
I don't think that, well, actually, let me rephrase. You can't tell because the math is not shown. Basically, if you look at...
But you're going to, but, but if there's a stamp on here, and we ask the following question, did you exclude all those areas exclude, included in the state statute when you considered lot coverage? And the person who stamped this plan says, yes, I included those in the computation, far be it from me. Because his license is on the line, I would think.
So that's going to get to my next argument about how do we actually talk about and characterize lot coverage? So let me just go back. If I could just clarify what I was saying, and I, and I don't mean to give a tutorial on wetlands or anything like that, but...
Well, I, I have not even mentioned this, so I was a member of conservation commission for over 12 years.
Okay, so you would know then...
So I get it.
So land subject to coastal storm flowage is land that gets flooded in a storm event.
Some storm events.
Significant storm, like a 100-year flood plain.
Yes.
There's other things like coastal beach, coastal dune, and salt marsh. All of those are low-lying, so they're inland subject to coastal storm flowage to begin with. This particular lot, and I'd have to look at my letter to get the numbers correctly, but let me just use round numbers. There's about 22,000 square feet of land subject to coastal storm flowage. Of that amount, about half of it is also beach, dune, and marsh. So that's what we're dealing with here. And so I think that if you're going to use the old and the right way, the math should be shown, which now segues to my next argument. So if you look at the plan, it doesn't show you a calculation of building area divided by lot area times 100, et cetera. It simply says the regulation allows 25%. The existing is 1,749, which then has parentheses 100%. And then the next figure says the new proposed footprint is 2,982, and it has parentheses that says 100%. So in other words, an increase of about 1,200 square feet in footprint is not changing lot coverage at all. So that doesn't make sense. And I'll make a confession, I went to law school because I'm not good at math, and that's not a joke, it's true. So I had to think about this.
You heard that conversation when you were in the audience, though, when I raised it to Chris, right? The 100 to 119%?
I heard that, and that's kind of where I'm going to go.
That's, I totally understand.
So I thought about this, and I thought about, well, what is a percentage? Because we talk about that all the time, you know, oh, give me 110, 10% effort, oh, et cetera. So what I learned over this weekend was that percentages are sometimes used to express a percentage of an, of a whole. And I kind of came up with an example, like if we all drive a car, you think your gas tank can fit 10 gallons of gas or 20 gallons of gas, whatever fits there. It can't fit anymore because if you put the gas in, it's going to come out the nozzle, right? And we look at our gauge, and we understand it's 100% full or it's 50% full, et cetera. But sometimes percentages are used to, to compare things. How much is something larger than the other? How big is this footprint versus that one, et cetera? And that's called a standard of comparison, is what I learned. And I came up with an example of my office copy machine can copy a document at half-size, 50%, full-size, 100%, or it can blow it up to 150%. The example I found on the internet this weekend was we can drink a glass of orange juice in the morning, and that we might get 100% of our vitamin C recommended values from that glass of juice, but you might have an orange for lunch, and you had 150% of your requirement that day. Here's why what we have to talk about is a standard of comparison. This lot is 25,000 square feet in size. The structure proposed is 2,924. So we know from simple math, forget about wetlands, as the prior calculation says, that's about 12%. But we know that the lot coverage that's allowed is 25%. So it's a standard of comparison. So I ran the numbers, and if you simply, the figures go like this, you take the footprint of the building and you divide it by the available upland or the lot area, you multiply it times 100. And so if you do that simple math, you get existing lot coverage at 71.5%, and the proposed is at 119%. And why is it over 100? Because this particular lot has about 2,400 square feet of upland that gets to count. And so this particular structure is more than that, and hence it's more than 100%. So how you want to deal with that is up to you, but what I would suggest to you is that lot coverage is a way to control density in neighborhoods. And there have been many times where I've been in the audience here, watching the board debate about certain parts of town that might have smaller houses, and I've seen projects where someone wants to come and add a deck or a small addition, and it goes from 19.5% to 21%. And I've seen this board say, no, we're very rigid on lot coverage because that's a way of controlling development in the town. And this land subject to coastal storm flowage has kind of thrown an unintended consequence to everybody. But my argument here is, is that the board should proceed very cautiously and set the precedent very carefully, because if you buy into my argument, and I explained it, it's, I think it's the right math, you have to think about how your decision is going to affect this case, other cases, and other cases where it's complete upland. Because if you give, and now I'm segueing, Mr. Bonby, if you want to come back at me for this particular argument, I'm segueing to my next argument. My next argument is, to the 20.1% kind of cases that I've seen the board say no to repeatedly, you are being asked to grant sweeping extensive relief. You're, you're being asked to go from 25% allowable with an existing condition of already 71% to 119. So if you simplify the math, the existing conditions are three times over allowable limits, and they're asking...
But a different concept.
Well...
You're not looking at, you're looking at a zoning concept compared to a visual slash overall concept. Lot, circumference, building, how much of that building is percentage of that lot? Now you take into effect that maybe part of this lot could end up having some water every 100 years for 10 minutes. You've got to take that out. That, for me, is not as visual, although it is the zoning regulation, which is the shame, I wish it was the opposite, but, but I, it's the way it is. So it's the way we have to deal with it, judge's toes, we have to deal with it that way. I get it. But I still want to understand, and that's why I'm saying, and the language is wrong, I get it, correct and old, I guess is the better way to put it, and that's why I'm trying to understand this. But I do understand now why you're saying 119%. I get it. I understand it completely.
Right. When you take away all the wetlands from the area...
Well, the question that begs to be asked is, pre-existing then, 75% under your theory, see, your theory, theory has, as is most zoning bylaws or decisions, zoning decisions, it's got a good side, bad side, right theory? So at 75%, it is pre-existing nonconforming. Would you agree?
I absolutely agree with that.
So going from 75% to 100% is still pre-existing nonconforming, correct?
No, that's an intensification of a pre-existing nonconforming.
No, that's a pre-existing, that's an extension of a pre-existing nonconforming.
That, that I agree with, yeah. You, you, the way you phrased it was different.
And, and people have a right, subject to the finding of this board, not, not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Right.
That, that applicant, so what you're saying is, this plan depicted 75% to 119%, plus or minus, math, I get it, I'm like you with math, right? I get it. I have other people that do the math thing. So that being said, and if this board found that it wasn't more detrimental to the neighborhood, that could be done.
Yes, it could. I agree, I agree with that, and I think that attorney Corrine correctly stated that this, this board has authority if it makes the right findings.
It was a procedural, in, in reference to that, it was definition and us not following definition correctly.
No, but, and here's where I differ with you, and if I may. So I agree with everything that you said, that there's a pre-existing nonconforming condition here as to lot coverage, that this board has authority to rank, rank it up to 119.
219. If it finds it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
But, but now, this is my arguing, argument about how extensive this relief really is. So if you think about it, when, day in and day out, when you're talking about special permits, you're, you're, I'll just give you a garden variety example. I'll just give you a garden variety example. Actually, this property, in a strange way, is that way, too. So there's a house, there's a small house that's 10 feet from the property line, and the setback's 15. So it's non-conforming as to setback. And they want to make a bigger, more modern house. So instead of being 15 feet of sidewall facing the neighbor, it's going to go to 30 feet. And so the argument is always made, well, it's already pre-existing to the side setback, we're getting no closer, we're just continuing that. That's the kind of thing that I would suggest the board does to, as we always say, grant relief, a safety valve, like on the radiator, let a little steam out, let them have a little bit of relief, as long as it's not substantially more detrimental. You are being asked to approve a structure that has a 67% bigger footprint than currently exists, that will take the lot coverage from 71 to 119. I just, you have the authority, but I'm suggesting to you, that's substantially more detrimental. That is a major request.
Using that possible once in a 100-year event in that thinking procedure, correct?
No, but, Mr. Bonby, there, you're suggesting that the reason why town meeting excludes wetlands is for that reason.
No, I'm just saying that, no, I get it, and I understand what you're saying. I'm in agreement with what you're saying. But I'm also saying that there's another, there's a flip side to that discussion. We could go on for hours here.
That's my point. My point has been made, and it's twofold. One is the math, and the other is how big of a request you're being asked.
And to the record, I disagree with your statement that the zoning bylaw is, you know, the judge has found it to be, you know-
Okay. There's a sub-argument to the last one, too, which happens to be with the wetland setback. So in this particular instance, when the plan came before you the first time, there was a dark line on the plan that showed where the edge, the landward edge of the dune was, which was the furthest landward wetlands resource other than land subject to coastal storm flowage. We now know that the wetlands go basically to the road. So this project goes from non-conforming, because it was outside of the dune but in the land subject to coastal storm flowage, to another almost 1,200 square feet in a wetland. And again, what the court said was, you should be considering that in whether you're finding something to be substantially more detrimental. The next argument, and I'm going to move along, is the one about the stories. So one of the primary concerns that my clients have, and I'm going to articulate this, not in a lawyerly way, but just in a common sense way, right now, they live next door to a small cottage that's very similar to theirs. It was actually built, there were two brothers that bought these properties, and my family still owns one of the properties. This is going to, and I have the numbers all in my letter, but they're looking at a small section of sidewall facing them, that is now going to go from approximately 26 feet, I think, to about 58 feet. So it's going to almost double in size, or double in size. And then it's going to go up three levels, I'll use the word levels for right now. And the plan shows, and it's got a stamp, so I'm not challenging it, it shows that the property, the proposed structure, is 30 feet above natural grade. So it complies with the 30-foot requirement. However, there are places on the property where the edifice is about 40 feet above actual grade. And bearing in mind that this is a special permit, that you have discretion here to grant or deny a special permit, my clients are making the argument that this is a very extensive, large, massive house that is going to tower over their particular property. And that got me thinking that, well, there's two ways the town regulates height. One is by the pure measurement of 30 feet above natural grade, and the other is by regulating, no, regulating stories.
No, I'm saying average grade.
Average grade, that, if I didn't say it, that's what I meant.
You said natural grade.
Natural average grade, correct.
Exactly. You left out average.
I didn't mean to, so there's, and again, it's stamped, I'm not suggesting it doesn't comply with natural average grade, but my point is, is there are points when you walk on this property, if this were to be built, where it's 40 feet up. But then I got to thinking about the stories, and in the Pompanaset District, you're limited to two and a half stories. And we'll have time between the meetings, you can look at these definitions, so you can see how you feel about this particular argument. But a definition of story is, that portion of a building contained between any floor and the floor or roof next above, but not including any portion so contained if it's more than half such portion vertically below the average natural grade. And I took the plans, and I took a highlighter, and I showed where the average grade was to myself, and I looked at this elevation. So we all know this building has to be elevated to comply with the building code, and the average natural grade is shown on the plan at 10.68, I believe. And the top of the pile foundation is at 17 feet 4 inches. So there's about a seven-inch elevation, sorry, seven-foot elevation from natural grade to the top of foundation. The plans, the architectural drawings, show that lower level to be encased in lattice work, and the corners have like fancy stonework. There's also a garage and an elevator that's at grade, so part of this first level is certainly contained, but the definition doesn't say habitable space, it just says that portion of a building. And I looked at building, and building includes foundations and quote, "all parts of any kind of structure above ground except fences, fields, or gardens." So bearing in mind that the town has kind of a two-tiered way to measure height, actual height and stories, this particular building, in my view, my argument, is it's going up one story to get above the floodplain, and then it's going up two full stories above that. And so it's actually three stories. There is a definition in the bylaw for half-story, but the bottom section is not a half-story, because that definition includes what's below a roof. So it, by definition, means the top story. And it also says it can't be more than 2/3 the size of the story below it. And obviously, the first level is the same size as the first story above. So I would suggest the board look at that, and again, bearing in mind that my client's primary concern with this house is the towering nature of it. Part of it's towering because it exceeds two and a half stories, and that's a new non-conformity, and that requires a variance. And my last argument, and I know I've occupied a lot of time, and you can read my letter, my last argument is a very traditional, this structure that's proposed is substantially more detrimental, and it's all laid out in my letter. It's too big, it's over lot coverage, it's going to affect light and air. There are air conditioners and generators proposed outside of the building in the setback. The land court determined that those are not structures, but that they're there, and they're going to make noise. And this board has discretion, because it's a special permit, to put conditions on this project and/or to deny the project. And I would ask you to carefully look at, as I've been arguing, taking a small 1,100-square-foot single-story cottage and turning it into a three-level 6,000-square-foot home, and whether that's appropriate in this particular neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe what I could suggest is, if there's going to be a continuance, to avoid any kind of last-minute submittals, the board could ask everyone to agree on certain dates to submit things, because I don't like to submit things at the last minute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, you want two or three minutes?
Yeah.
And then we're going to move to the audience.
Done.
Yeah, I'm going to have Chris.
Yeah, I'll be briefly, like all those other people in the audience.
Couple of minutes, and then I'll move to the audience.
That's fine. Just a couple of points, I mean, I can have Raul come up and discuss, you know, his calculations, but I think it's a little bit of a mischaracterization when we're talking about the 10,000 feet and the 11,000 square feet. We did make those calculations, that's why we've come up with a lot area of 1,250 square feet, because we've included the coastal dune, and we've included the land subject to coastal storm flowage. When I'm talking about the 25,000 square feet, we're talking about upland area, the old calculation. So I'd just like to make that point. When we've given, per the court's order, we've made a lot area calculation of 1,250 square feet, that includes all those resource areas. The second point is, I mean, the board does not need to make any finding as to lot coverage. There's nothing in the 174-17.1 that requires you to say it's 119, or 71, or 201. You know, the calculations are what they are, we may disagree. You know, my, a weird kind of thing is, if we have a lot that's in 100%, totally within, I do it on my calculator, I get an error. So there's, you can't divide a structure by zero.
Do you agree, though, it should be correctly depicted on the plan? Whatever the zoning bylaw calls for.
Well, I mean, it is.
I'm not saying it isn't. I'm just saying that it should be correctly depicted.
Yes, correct. Yes, and I think we've, I mean, at least, at the very least, we've shown you what the actual areas, you know, the areas are. You know, again, you know, we're saying it's 100%, because it's more than what's, you know, the structure is more than what the upland area is. And again, if this lot was wholly within land subject to coastal flowage, we'd be 100, I mean, there's no other calculation but 100%, but I mean, it's really near the head or there. You know, it's a non-conforming condition, the board certainly has the discretion to, you know, find that it's not substantially more detrimental. You know, I don't know if Raul has anything he wants to mention about his calculations, but, you know, I'll give it to him.
Good evening, Raul, you started from Cape Ann Islands Engineering, representing the applicant here with attorney. So yeah, the calculations are correct, and I guess this point has been brought before this board a few times. The upland area that is called on plans, it exclude the actual definition of a wetland, not the definition of the Wetland Protection Act. A wetland is characterized by the soil characteristics. It has to be a hydroxic soils, it has to support more than 50% wetland species plants. So there are other wetland resources, and we understand they need to be protected and so forth, land subject to coastal storm flowage, coastal banks, which are actual, based on the characterization of the soil, they're actual uplands, but they're a wetland resource. Dunes, coastal beach, they're actual upland in terms of the soil characteristics, but they're protected under the Wetland Protection Act. So when we show upland area on a plan, it excludes soil-conditioned wetlands. And in this case, that's what the plan shows, the 25,000 square feet. There's other projects where 100% of the property is either a coastal bank, part of it is land subject to coastal storm flowage. The lot coverage have been calculated, has been calculated in the past, accounting for that coastal bank as upland. But nevertheless, in this plan, we show both numbers. We show the old method, and we show the corrected method, which excludes the flood zone. Now, the flood zone hits a structure, and Bill, the commissioner, can correct me if I'm wrong, if a structure is in the flood zone, the entire structure is in the flood zone. So because this flood zone hits the structure, the footprint of the existing structure is land subject to coastal storm flowage, we cannot count the square footage of the structure. There's two flood zones at play here, there's a velocity zone, and there's an AE zone. So the only area that's available above the floodplain here is roughly 1,250 square feet. So that's the corrected calculations for lot coverage, and that's what the plan is showing. So that was my point on the lot coverage. And yeah, we've been using it the old-fashioned way, which is also used in other towns. To be honest, this is the only town that I have to do this new calculation, but fine, that's the regulation, and that's what we're doing. I think that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one final comment, I know, you know, we're talking about this lot coverage issue. The size of this structure, from what it is to what it's going towards, on the size of the upland area, is not inconsistent with what this board has approved recently, even under the new theory. So I'll leave it at that, because I know we're going to probably be talking to this again.
All right. Anybody in the audience? Come right up.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Mary Wagan. I live at 35 Ashument Road, and I'm a member of a special permit granting authority myself. I'm a member of the planning board, I'm not representing the planning board here tonight, but I understand all the things that you're going through as you consider a special permit. I read with great interest the land court decision dated January 5th, 2023, remanding the board's decision regarding 228 Waiting Place Road back to the zoning board of appeals. And the judge notes, as you've mentioned many times and obviously read, that the approval of the proposed project at 228 Waiting Place Road can only be granted when the change is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I've also, I also watched with great interest your public hearing held on January 11th, 2023, regarding 49 Clover Lane. And during that hearing, it was stated that there is a long precedence of the zoning board of appeals to look to the decisions of the conservation commission when determining if a proposed project is substantially more detrimental when considering the impacts on wetland resource areas. And that's an obviously logical thing to do. Got me thinking, if the board looks to the CONCOM to determine detriment with respect to wetlands resource areas, then likewise, the board should look at, to abutters in the neighborhood if a project is more substantially detrimental to the abutters and the neighborhood. For impacts on wetlands, you're looking to the CONCOM to determine whether it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, you really need to look to the abutters and the neighborhood. Seeing that an abutter has objected strongly, so strongly to your decision, that they appealed it to land court, and further, that there's currently a citizen's petition to repeal zoning bylaw section 174-711, raise and replace, because of the impacts that that bylaw has had on the neighborhoods in town, I urge the zoning board of appeal to deny this application as presented, and approve only a plan which is scaled back to the point that is deemed reasonable to the neighbors in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come right up. Okay, and if you would, your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive.
What number?
Oh, 73 Surf Drive, sorry. I have a short statement. And as some of you know, or maybe you don't, I'm big into visual aids. So I'm going to bring out some visual aids here. There's your bottle of bourbon, and here's your beer. Just over a year ago, specifically on January 26, 2022, the ZBA met with attorney Kevin Karine to address one of his projects, which was postponed. The meeting included a discussion that seemed to be related to the impending lawsuit we are addressing tonight. I viewed this meeting on the town's website and its astonishing discussion between the ZBA members and the attorney for the developer/builder. They all discussed at length changing the height restrictions, defining what is a wetland, a floodplain, possible bylaw changes of setbacks, what is non-conforming, and how to get around or modify the existing bylaws or restrictions. The attorney was a full participant in this discussion with the ZBA members, consulting with the attorney for what the town should do. The ZBA is supposed to represent the interests of the town and all its residents, not just a handful of developers and their attorneys. I've been pleased to hear some of the discussion this evening. But here is how the meeting ended, and I will play you just about a minute of it, because that's really all that's relevant.
It would be no higher than the one next door that's built at an elevation of 10, as opposed to an elevation of 5.
I guess you'd have to take the average, if you could prove that the average in the neighborhood, what everybody's height is, and say, I'm not going to be, I'm 35, I'm going to 33, but I'm not higher than this guy down the street.
That's an argument.
Those are the issues.
Because I know we have that setback thing with the street, that if you can show the abutters, take the average of the abutters, if they're closer to the street, they're you're-
This is the kind of discussion we should have over a beer or a bourbon.
All right, would George, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, I'm adjourned tonight, man.
And then the meeting adjourned. Bourbon and beer. Many in this town believe that the variances the ZBA grants are not beneficial to the town, its character, and the environment. So we want our own beer and bourbon-type discussion with the ZBA to address the need for limits, restrictions, setbacks, improved bylaws to address our climate and water crisis. We are, we, the whole world, is facing a real climate crisis, so I really have to object to this thinking that we won't have many 100-year floods in the next 20 years. We want a bourbon and beer meeting with the ZBA, so that you will truly understand what the community and the neighbors believe is, quote, "detrimental to the community." And if you want us to bring the beer and bourbon, we will. Thank you. Thank you.
Don't forget your.
I'll leave it. Hi, Art and Russell, Sturgis Lane.
What number?
I prefer not to give the number. I don't need people knocking at my door. I'm here tonight as a resident of Mashpee, who you have been appointed to represent, to insist that you properly and legally interpret the zoning act and the Mashpee regulations in this case and in every case before you. The judge has, in fact, ordered you to do that. Is this proposal more detrimental to the neighborhood? I think you're hearing tonight that clearly it is. A zero-foot setback from a wetland is abominable. It should not ever be considered, especially considering the condition of our environment. The old way is the wrong way. It's no longer allowed, and it shouldn't even be discussed or considered. We've had enough of the abuse of the raise and replace bylaw in this town, and we want an end to the blatant disregard of Mashpee's zoning. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ron, would you like to make a motion to continue this? Okay. We're coming back in.
Okay, we'll do it. Just have some, oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Beth Andrew Berry, and we're from the Andrew Family Trust, 226 Waiting Place Road. This is just a visual to show how this project at 228 is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I can leave this here for you, but this first set of pictures shows all the water and flooding on the roads that are occurring in the area. The second picture is an article that was in the New York Times on January 1st of 2023, called "A Toxic Stew on Cape Cod." This picture right here is adjacent to the property at 228, and it just talks about how the development in Mashpee has created, I want to read it correctly, is just increasing the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus that's discharged into the waters. This sign right here tells you that it's, the water's contaminated, and you shouldn't swim or fish. This says swimming may cause illness. This says the future of bubbling go. If this isn't more detrimental to a neighborhood, please tell me what is. This picture here shows all the raise and replaces that you've approved, all the land that's been filled. And then this picture here shows every time it rains, what happens to the people that live across the street? The street gets flooded, more detrimental to the neighborhood. This picture here shows all the algae blooms that are caused by the nitrogen levels when a home proposed like 228 that has five toilets is allowed to be on the same septic when there was one bathroom. And of course, it's a two-bedroom house. How a 6,000-square-foot house could be considered two-bedroom? That's another issue. This is an ad that's going in the Boston Globe that talks about please save Cape Cod and the islands. It specifically talks about the issues with water pollution. This shows a house that was approved for raise and replace. All the drains were put in. Every time it rains, the water flows into the street. And this just illustrates, this is what the house at 228, the proposed, will look like and how it towers over other homes. That's a house built on stilts. And this last thing here is a FEMA study that was recently put out that just shows that in the year 2030, 228 Waiting Place Road will be underwater. So I'm happy to leave this here for you, but this just shows how all these things that are occurring in Mashpee in this area are substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any final comments? What's the next available date? March 8th? How does March 8th sound?
March 8th, we'll be fine.
So Chris, you're asking for an extension to March 8th?
I am asking for a continuance to March 8th, and I guess I just want to point out that, you know, these issues are, you know, I understand these are town issues, but, you know, to suggest that this, you know, the algae bloom, we're not talking about if the algae bloom is more substantially more detrimental, or the flooding is more substantially more detrimental. You know, this is a house that's gonna be going up on piles, it's gonna be flood zone compliant. That's a benefit to everybody. And yeah, we have one neighbor here, but I think you can extrapolate, you know, the fact that, you know, there are no other neighbors here, you know? Is it really that more substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, to the whole neighborhood? So with that, I will request my continuance to March 8th.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant of 228 Waiting Place Road, Chris Corain's request for an extend, or a continuance until March 8th, 2023.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Jim seconds. Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. Nothing to sign, right? Okay, let's wait a bit. Brad, you're gonna sit on the next one. Any papers to pass in? Jim, are you done with that? Yeah. Okay, Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
234 Old Barnstable Road. Owner Anthony J. LaCava Jr., trustee, requests an appeal of the building commissioner's decision under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Number 8, and 15, to modify the 1980 special permit, Washington Valley Development, and allow for the construction of 29 single-family homes on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 595 Mashpee Mass.
Good evening, again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the Anthony J. LaCava, or the AJL LaCava Realty Trust, too. Kind of have a unique request tonight. It's really just a process question. We've come before the board. Basically, we're asking to modify a special permit that was granted by this board back in the midnight, mid-1970s, and was amended in 19, early 1980s, was again amended in early 1992, and again modified, amended in 2002, to build single-family, single-family residences. The building commissioner has made a determination that that special permit has lapsed, and we're simply challenging that, basically on, you know, historical precedence of what's happening, what's what happens at this site. So you have my letter, you know, back in the 1970s, there was an approval for Washington Valley that included single-family residences and multifamily residents, and it was like 715 multifamilies and 178 single families. There was a modification of that plan in the early 80s, which went from 520 multifamilies to 232 single families. The, later on in the 90s, there was a determination by the zoning board that the multifamily portion of this project has lapsed, that you cannot build any more multifamilies. So, and that was in the early 90s, and then kind of reaffirmed that in 2002, when they modified it for prime properties to allow single-family residences in this area. So what my client is asking for, there's 232 lots, there's a, we, I had it originally at 29. Under this 232, there's probably 20, approximately 23 lots that are potentially buildable in this area. And because it was originally a zoning board permit, I'm looking for a determination from this board that the permit has not lapsed, and that we can take the next step, which would be to go before the planning board to get a modification of the subdivision. There may be conservation issues that we'd have to work our way through, you know, so there, all those issues are down the line. This is simply just a procedural question of whether we can take this step forward. And the way the law works is that when you receive a special permit, you have the right to, you have to exercise that right within one year, substantial construction within one year. However, as I know Mr. Bonvy knows, you can phase projects, and you don't have to build all the phases within one year. And certainly, this project has not been built in one year. In fact, the building commissioner is still issuing building permits within the last couple years. So it strikes me as somewhat, it's tough for me to go back to my client and say, no, this permit has lapsed. You can't go through this process when we're still issuing building permits for this area. I think there's probably 60 more building permits, buildable lots, that are gonna need building permits in this area. So if they can get building permits under this modification that was done in 2002, why, what I'm asking is, why can't I modify to allow the 23 building permits to be potentially allowed if, again, the planning board would have to approve the modification, and the, you know, if there's conservation, we'd have to go through conservation? So that's what I'm looking for now, is a determination by this board to determine that the permit has not lapsed as to the single-family residences, because of the fact that substantial construction on the original special permit has already, you know, was, you know, started within one year. On two occasions, in early 90s and early 2002, the zoning board, I know, I don't know that any of you were on the board at that time, but made a determination that the permit had not lapsed as the single-family residences, allowed a modification of the of the permit at that time, and even as of today, we're still issuing building permits under this permit. So how could it have lapsed if we're still issuing building permits? So that's kind of the, it in a nutshell. I know it's kind of complicated. I know it's getting late. You know, a lot of this is in my letter.
So you said to Ron that sometimes it gets phased?
Southport? Southport is a phase.
This was done about the same time Southport was done, and many.
So is this a different phase that he says is lapsed?
Yes. Yes. But that's not the, but you can phase things. You don't have to build them within one year. The way the statute reads, section nine, 48, section nine, says, as long as you complete substantial, you start substantial construction within one year, there's no lapse.
Is there not ongoing required under that, too?
Yeah. What do you mean?
Isn't there ongoing construction required?
No, no, there's not.
I was, I thought it was more relying on, I think, wasn't there a suit or something that was going on when then the permits were extended or something? But I thought there was something in that section that required ongoing, but I'm not sure.
No, it does not require ongoing. It requires substantial construction, you know, the start of construction within that one year, substantial use of the permit. But again, you know, we're issuing permits to this day on a modification.
Why is David, I mean, it seems to me we need to hear from David.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, David, you must be saying no, right?
Yeah. It's.
It's a complicated.
The roadwork, nothing has been done for that part of the, for that part of.
For how long?
For many, many years, since 1972. Then, and the biggest, I'll have to be, be my.
It seemed to me we'd have to look at the 2002 decision of the extension. Was it a short extension, like a simple one?
It wasn't an extension. It was said that you could modify the permit and allow for the construction of the lots.
So there was an application, just for clarity, there was an application made in 2002.
Right, to modify the subdivision.
Modify the subdivision. Why don't you spell that out, please?
Okay. So. In August of 28, 2002, the zoning board, and I had to take it from the minutes, reiterated the board's position that the special permit is still in effect, and the changes that were proposed at that time were still within the scope of the original special permit.
What were those changes?
These lots here. So these lots, some of these lots were put, where there was originally supposed to be multifamily.
So there was not a decision drafted from that?
There must have, I don't know, I can't find it.
Oh, my God.
There isn't one, press, you know it.
Whoa.
Well, I don't, I don't know anything, because I have them.
A decision had and a vote had, but no decision? No draft?
Just that I couldn't find, as I said.
No, we don't have any proof.
I have the minutes from the meeting that say that, the minutes from the August 28, 22 meeting, which I've given you, zoning board meeting minutes reiterating the board's position that the special permit is still in effect and change proposed. I'm not just making that up out of thin air. Those are from the minutes of the meeting that I provided this board as part of this letter.
I have a good idea. And I'll get to you on seven. Why don't you put something together? I think we need to send this to town council.
Sure. I mean, town council is.
This is way beyond.
It's complicated, I agree. But again, we're looking at a permit that was originally, you know, given in 1970s.
Make your case.
People are still getting building permits on it, so.
Make your case, or David, make his case. We'll send it right to the town.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
It's way beyond me. Sir?
What do you do, Andy, everyone except Ron?
My name is Ken Marsters. Prime Homes he references is me. I represented Mr. LaCava in 1990, not 2000. I got all the permits for Mr. LaCava. And what Chris didn't mention was the 1980 special permit that clearly stayed the phasing project for the, for the multifamily. The multifamily units over here that you don't see, over here, was a phased project for 10 years, and they extended it in 1980 to 1990. After, knowing being built in 1990, it phased out. It became invalid. This is all an invalid area per the Cape Cod Commission, which I have a letter. The reason why we are over here developing lots is because the 1980 permit said there is no timetable on the single-family lots. So they're mutually exclusive from each other. So Chris can't argue that we're pulling permits on the single family, and it still applies to the multifamily. Two mutually exclusive things. I can pull my permits right here all I want, because it wasn't phased. This project was phased. It's, let me just. It is, it is clearly, and I have all, I have every permit from Washington Valley in here. In the 1980 permit, and I think, I'll just, I'll just refer to, if you don't mind me mine, has a, it has number three, the permit. The project shall be phased over a five-year period, but not more to exceed 10 years. So it's a 10-year project. No more than 104 condominiums, but no less than 52. No more than 46 single-family houses. It's pretty vague, but we got a determination from the ZBA back in 2000 that said the multifamily unit is invalid, and we can go ahead and build our units, because Country Club Road was approved in 1983. So we basically had a paper subdivision. So we weren't in, we did not go in for a modification that Chris references in 2002. We went procedural. We just went in, they blessed it, and then we went to the planning board. There is no modification. There's only two modifications that were listed historically for Washington Valley, and they have right here, a handout. You see that I know what I'm talking about? I have it all been 1976, the original one. That's the chronological order of. Can I stop it at 1986? Because I'm involved in it in 1990. In 1986 was the last modification that was made. There was no modification in 2002. Am I unsure?
Okay.
So, you know.
I guess the question is, this is all 70s and 80s.
Yeah, but it's, but it's historical to what we're talking to. This is, this is a 76 permit.
His point is that it expired.
My point is it expired. Yes. Yeah. I'm just giving you that for historical perspective, because there's so much paperwork to go here. The multi-expired, yes, the multi-expired.
Jonathan's saying, town, town, the zoning enforcement officer is saying that the permit expired, right? Is that what you're, that's what you're saying? Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's part of the, we're talking about.
Definitely something that I don't want to stand alone and prove.
David is, David is saying, I can't speak for David, David's saying the whole permit is lapsed.
No, 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 I have, I have approved subdivision. I have approved subdivision.
Kenny has approved subdivision.
I have.
I mean, the other law. I mean, the other lots you're talking about. There's your lots.
Yeah, well, they want to make them lots because the condominium is lapsed. So now they're trying to make it lots, but that's, it's an invalid permit. What they can do is they can come to the town like that and say, I have 25 acres, right? And I want something like it. And I want a special permit. But they can't pick you back off the 1980 special permit.
So do you agree with town, with the zoning enforcement officer that in fact, the permit for, not the ones you're working on now, but the ones in the future have lapsed? Are you in agreement with that?
The ZBA sent that back, yeah.
Oh, so you're, you're agreeing with?
Oh, I'm agreeing with David, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I knew that.
Sorry about that.
So why are we appealing his decision?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
I'm well mixed up here.
Okay.
You're building lots, you're building the lots on LaCava's property, right?
On my property. I own the property.
But you bought it from LaCava.
I bought it from LaCava, right.
Right.
But that's got nothing to do with this petition.
Right.
He's a member of the public.
I'm a member of the public, really. Good way. Thank you, Mary.
I get it.
Okay. Now, I think, one of those handouts, I had verbiage that I was going to read, but I think I reiterated it all. On the second page, there is a referral, we got referred to the Cape Cod Commission back in 2002. And they said that the multifamily portion of the project is invalid based on all the information they got from the town.
So you're saying the portion includes multifamily and actually, single-family indirectly?
Well, no, they're just referring to, you'll read it. They're just referring to, they're just referring to the area that Chris wants to get 29 lots on. I'm all set with mine.
In reference to the other area, you're saying that you agree with town, to the zoning enforcement officer, that it has lapsed?
Yes. And I agree with the decision that was made by the zoning board in 2002 that said it was lapsed. And I agree with the Cape Cod Commission in 2002 that said it was lapsed. It's pretty simple. I mean, it sounds complicated, but it's pretty simple. Thank you.
I thought you would, no, I, I get it.
And if you have any questions or concerns, I have every special permit that has ever been issued, that was given out. And one other thing over here, too, is that's not the most recent plan either. There's another, there's another more recent plan.
To provide to town council if we're going to refer it to.
Jim, I'd like to speak. Thank you. Mary Wagan, 35, Ashument Road. It's my understanding, too, that in, that in 2002, the planning board made minor changes to the subdivision plan, approving some engineering, changed an original layout to establish a fire access and to approve the details, the engineered details of the entrance to the Quash and Country Club clubhouse. But that this in no way can be construed as an approval of the, of a single-family subdivision on land that was once permitted for multifamily housing, which has expired. Since that time, since even 2002, our zoning has changed, our rules and regulations have changed. I, I recommend that the ZBA uphold the December 30th, 2022 decision of the building commissioner and require the owner of this property to go forward and get permitted under current zoning and rules and regulations. Things change because our conditions in town change. There are new provisions in our zoning that protect our groundwater. There are, there are more stringent stormwater controls. There's nutrient-removing mechanisms required now that decrease our nitrogen and phosphorus load. So it's very important that, that we're not, we're no longer using, you know, permits from decades ago. We need to use our new zoning. It's not, it's not saying that, you know, people can't build on their land. What it says is it's doing so with less impact on the town. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Pardon, Russell, Sturgis Lane, again. So are we relying solely on the applicant to sort this out, to give you the history of this? That's kind of disturbing. As you see, they tell portions of the story and portion of the history. There should be a staff analysis of actually what went on here. I just have one thing to say, and that is you should abide by the decision of the professional staff, which supports this board, who is the zoning enforcement officer, who has done the analysis and has determined that this permit has lapsed. The 1980 modification of the permit, as you've heard tonight, does state that it must be completed within 10 years. That clearly has passed. And this ZBA, not you people particularly, but the ZBA in 1993 upheld that decision and denied the application to turn the multifamily area into single-family homes. So you can look to your own decisions to understand that this has lapsed. It has, the property has a long history of review, as we've stated, and all those determinations have concluded that the permit has lapsed. The historical perspective in this case is that in that area, this permit has lapsed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Why don't we?
I would, I would make a suggestion that we continue this and refer it to town council. I am in support of the building commissioner as we sit here tonight, but I would like to get an opinion from town council.
Absolutely. I'm with you.
Is that a motion? No, I'm just making a statement.
Do we need an extension from that gentleman right there who is appealing his decision?
Yes, you would need an extension from me. I just want to kind of, I know it's, you know, it is, I keep, I'm not trying to build multifamily units there. I understand that the multifamily unit portion of the, is lapsed. You know, as I said, we're still building, you know, single-family, single-family residences there, you know, 20 years after, you know, whether it's a modification or a blessing. They got something from the zoning board in 2002 that said it was okay to do what they're doing.
Only reason why I made the statement I made, I think, is the 30s. I thought the LaCava.
I'm not going to sit here and get, be called a liar because there's minutes from the meeting that you went to the meeting.
We don't need, we don't need that in here.
Just, just.
Do that again.
I apologize. I apologize, but tough to hear. Sorry. My personal fault.
I was, the reason why I made the statement earlier is I thought it was one permit. It seems as though it may have bifurcated. I don't know. That's the only reason why I made it earlier.
Right. It's, I mean, it's really one permit.
Well.
Right.
But I understand, but there are trigger points within that permit that could bifurcate and could say, this section is no longer buildable, this section is buildable. So I'm just saying that I envisioned it as one permit.
Correct.
But it could not be. I mean, it may not be. I mean, so I think, I agree with, I agree with Billy and Jonathan that this is going to go to town council.
Sure.
If I could say something, I have gone to town council, voted.
Oh, you have.
We have conferred with Chris, voted.
And what was that, what was that conversation?
Well, he supports the zoning enforcement officer.
So it's just going to go around in a circle.
So you're, so right now, you have an appeal if this decision is written. I presume you got that in writing.
Yes.
You're appealing that decision right now?
That's correct.
Appealing what decision?
The decision that the town, the enforcement officer is stating that the permit has lapsed.
And town council has.
Appinned, it sounds like, to with.
David, did you get an opinion from town council?
We have.
That it has lapsed?
Yes.
Okay.
Condition 10 provides the bill.
That's good enough.
And what does that mean for, for the petitioner? Do they have to reapply?
I'd have to apply, you'd have to either go apply for a 40B or you'd have to apply for a cluster subdivision, anything like that. I mean, I, I guess before the board renders a decision, I'd like to, because I don't know that there's actual written opinion from town council. There's the zoning enforcement officer's opinion that I think was assisted by.
Well, I think the question of the zoning enforcement officer who works for the town is, he, David, did you clearly get an opinion?
If you want to get an opinion, if you, if you want that opinion, Chris, I think you could have that right from the town.
Personally, if you're saying to this board, to me, that you got an opinion from town council, that this permit has lapsed, I'm okay with that.
I, I have consulted town council for this, for this opinion. Absolutely.
And, and you're saying town council's opinion is, is it, it has lapsed?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that does it.
We don't have to waste as far as one vote.
Understood.
Fine with that.
Want to make a motion?
So do you want me to make it an affirmative or negative? How do you want to handle it?
Affirmative, and then we.
It's a vote to uphold the building commission's decision on the.
Okay, so.
Brad, you're on this.
Yep.
So yes, we uphold the decision.
One second. I want to make sure the motion is correct.
Read it correctly. No, I think, Ron, the way you'd like to do this, if you, if I can make a suggestion.
Oh, I'm, I'm listening. I'm listening.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
The application.
That's, so the affirmative.
Yes.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion that we issue the appeal in reference to 234 Obonosville Road.
In other words, you grant the appeal?
We grant the appeal. Be a better way. We grant the appeal of the zoning enforcement officer's decision in reference to the modification of the 201980 special permit, Quash and Valley Development, which would, which would have allowed for the construction of 29 single-family homes appropriate, property located in our five zoning district, map 559, prosified Mashpee, Mass. Set addresses 234 Obonosville Road and owners Anthony J. Carver. So I'm making the statement that I'm saying that we are approving the appeal.
So you would vote.
Have a second.
In favor of the appeal, if you want to overturn his decision, would vote against it if you're not going to overturn his decision.
I'm not trying to, I don't want to make this over. Why don't you just take a vote that you uphold the decision of the building commissioner?
That's not the way we do it here.
That's, I'm doing what I'm being asked to do.
You have a second?
I'll say. All right. Give a second. Bill, how do you vote?
No.
Okay. Brad, how do you vote?
No.
Jim?
No.
Ron?
Just clarity, I'm so, I'm going to vote no, which in, which states that I'm saying that I'm upholding the decision of the zoning enforcement officer.
Exactly.
And I vote no.
I think that clarifies it.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you. Here, Chris.
I always ask affirmative, but, you know.
Because we always try and do it in affirmative. We have one more, I think.
31 Quaker Run. You ready?
Where the hell are we?
Okay. 31 Quaker Run Road. Petitioner Octavio Olivera Construction Inc. requests a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing non-conforming single-family residential dwelling in a new single-family residential dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 83, parcel 8-0, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record Arnold Henderson and Jeanette A. Gerald.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
It's been an interesting night, hasn't it?
Educational.
Right ahead. Oh, wait a minute, yeah. Hold on one second before you start. Where are my, we're going to find out whose arms. What if you knew that? Oh, I think. Oh, yeah. Sit tight for a couple of minutes. We've got some paperwork to.
I jumped the gun.
So.
No.
So.
No.
To deny.
It was. 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 It was.
Who's sitting?
Oh, I don't know.
It's here.
Nope. He's all I got.
Go, Sharon.
You've got to pass it over to Mary Ann. You're on?
That's true. That makes two.
All right. Go ahead. Okay, good evening.
Wait a minute.
Who's sitting? All right, so, I don't know.
Who sat on the last one?
Brad.
Brad, right. All right, Bob, why don't you sit on this one? It's Bob. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. Basically, on, uh, July 25, 2002, we have a permit approved, R220731, to do addition. Uh, the existing house is 652 square feet, screen porch, 364, shared 84, total 1,142. And we propose addition. Then, my customer had some issues with the older contractor. Then, this year, uh, we applied to, to get the job done. But when we show up on the job, uh, the existing cottage and the crow space, the foundation, everything, it's so bad, it's unsafe for us just adding, uh, to the addition. Then, we propose to, to take the, the old house down, and we're going to keep, nothing's going to change. The same footprint, everything's going to be the same. Basically, we're going to just do a new foundation and bring the old existing to a new code.
So what are we, what are we trying to do here?
I have no idea, because I've lost all my...
Lost all my paperwork too. Gone.
I leave the room and everything disappears.
Dave, do you have issues with this?
Um, I think that, I think we had a permit to do the addition to the house. I guess that they went out and they sent the foundation is, is unstable. So that we, we, we withdrew the addition?
I don't, my name is Brock Tucci, I'm the excavation contractor. I've been involved with both contractors.
Yeah.
As I recall, I have the plans. The original plan was for the whole house, just the foundation. I'm sorry, just the foundation was an addition to the old one. And it just didn't make sense to try and put a foundation, full foundation, three feet from a four-foot foundation, just stabilizing the old one so it didn't fall in the hole. Made no sense. But I'm pretty sure the old plans for the original permit was basically the same house. It's just all we're trying to do is put a full foundation under the whole thing. That's the only change.
So we have a block foundation?
No, it's, it's concrete, but it's from 1957. I mean, they bought the lot in 57, so I'm assuming they built it then.
From what I understand, so, we did have a permit for an addition, for a screened-in porch or something?
No, I, I think it was the whole thing, because I have the plans, and I should have brought them with me. I had the plans from the original permit. And that was the whole house as well. It's just that the old foundation was staying on the part of it, which I argued back then, I tried to make them change it. And at one point they were going to, and then they weren't. Like I said, just trying to stabilize that, the old foundation, it made no sense.
Basically, I was trying to clear this up for the board, and I'm still confused with this. But I did have them write a letter. They want to take this, raise and replace this house, and put the, the exact same foundation down.
Same, same footprint.
Exactly the same, not as much.
So you, all you want to do is replace the foundation?
Yes. Yes.
And you save the spot?
Yep.
So you're rebuilding the house?
Yeah, and the, the letter states, the, because the only way we'd get the surveyor to agree would, he'd come out and he'd stake the foundation as it is. He'll come out and pin the footing to make sure that it's, it, everything goes...
What, did we prior approve, though? You said we prior...
I think it's a, I think it's a whole house. I'm pretty sure. It's just it was a, it was a, an addition foundation, but it carried over to the whole house.
How long ago? Because there's no lot coverage or anything in this way, right, that I can see. My point is, is, I'm trying to understand, did we already approve a raise and replace? And, and they weren't going to replace the foundation, and now they want to replace the foundation?
No, Mary Ann, Mary Ann's what?
Okay. They had an addition that they wanted to do, but...
And it conformed.
Changed it, and now they want to do a raise and replace. They did not come to the board prior to the addition.
So we look at this realistically, this is a new application, we can't about pass?
Brand new.
So nothing to do with the past?
Correct.
Okay. So this is a raise and replace, so we need plans to support that?
I would only stand there, Dave. Are you putting the foundation, it sounds like, in the exact same location?
Exactly. It's going to be located by the surveyor.
Lot coverage is going to be the exactly same.
Lot coverage is on there. It's, um...
Yeah, nothing's changed.
19 and a half percent.
So, I don't know.
The house is gone, but I think I...
Do we have house plans?
And the lot coverage is right over there, I think. 19.1 something?
Hey.
So... So you've never come to this board before?
No, no. They do have, they have...
So this is still a brand-new raise and replace?
Basically, we're going to just take the old foundation and put it in one.
And you're, and just for clarity, for the, for the, for the record, you're putting the house, if there is such a thing, in the exact same location?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
You have an engineer's letter, you should have it, that states that...
I'll read the letter. Let me read the letter.
Go ahead.
February, February 13th, 2023, Dear Zoning Board of Appeal, I have been asked to write a letter stating that the proposed building at 31 Quaker Run Road will be built in the locations shown on the plan. I have told the contractor that I will stake out the proposed locations following the demolition of the house when requested to do so. I also recommend that the proposed foundation corners be pinned on the new footing when requested to do so. Uh, I hope these assurances will serve. Best regards, Richard Hood, PLS.
What about bedrooms? Same number of bedrooms?
Still three, yes. In fact, they're supposed to be, isn't there, um, date restriction?
Or is there anything?
No matter what, that they can't do anymore.
Septic is a, it's actually two bedrooms.
Exactly, for two bedrooms. Yes, two bedrooms, yeah. There's a date restriction. It's supposed to be...
So let's see what the plan shows.
So the height of this building is 24'3" and 15'30 seconds?
Mm-hmm.
According to the Board of Health, the septic is designed for two bedrooms.
Correct. Did you just...
And how many bedrooms in this house?
Two.
David, any issues here?
No, there's just one nonconformity in, in the front.
But it's pre-existing, because...
Pre-existing.
Because it's the same footprint.
They're doing the same exact thing. I don't really have any...
I think the saving grace is the fact that they're pinning it in the same exact location.
Correct, and...
I like it.
There's no new nonconformities.
Right.
There's no extensions of existing nonconformities. It's as is. I think we just need to make sure that we read in the Board of Health, two-bedroom restriction.
Sharon, you want to read in the second?
I did. The septic's designed for two bedrooms, approved in 6222. Health Department is okay.
And Catherine Laurent? DPW?
Yep.
You need a curb cutter, believe me.
Curb cutter?
Where did I have that? I'm losing my paperwork too.
Was a Board of Health comment?
There is. Want to help us? Board of Health, you ready?
I read that. Oh, okay. I spoke with the representative of the property owners at 31 Quaker Run. They are in agreement to construct a new driveway on the property along the northern property line, and understand that a curb cut permit would be required from the DPW. Because the hearing is tomorrow, we thought the ZBA could just impose a condition since there won't be time to revise the plan.
Okay, there's a follow-up on the 22nd.
Okay. Okay. Another one from DPW dated February 22nd. The site plan submitted does not show a driveway for the property. There is an apron on the adjacent neighborhood open space property, Dry Hollow Lane, but it is unclear whether the applicant has the right to use this property for parking. Provisions of a driveway should be required. On-street parking on Quaker Run Road should not be permitted. Driveway will require a curb cut from the DPW, as Quaker Run Road is the town-owned road. Thanks, Catherine Laurent.
Did you, did you write in this, did you write on this plan after she saw proposed driveway?
Yeah, yes, because she's, the statements, you have them reversed. She sent that letter saying we're all set. We talked, and, and it's, make it contingent, you know, on...
Oh, so you're saying the first letter came saying, here's the issues?
Yeah.
And then you wrote proposed driveway, and then she wrote the second letter?
Yeah.
Got it.
All right, I make better sense. It's getting late, yeah. Well, that makes it...
Do we have something passed February 22nd?
I read them both.
She read them both.
I read them both.
But the applicant's saying the one...
So the one on the 22nd says...
I, I read one from the 21st first.
I did.
And the one from the 22nd, second.
February 22nd? Shouldn't be because...
They've read them both, yeah.
Is the one from February 22nd stating that...
Got it.
It's all set?
We're all good.
Got it, okay. I circled the wrong dates.
So you, you, you wrote on proposed driveway per the DPW's request to answer her concern?
Right, yeah, for tonight, for the meeting. I offered to come down and get, to do the paperwork with it.
That satisfied her, and that's why she wrote the second letter?
Yeah.
All right, that's good.
Got it.
And we know we can't get an occupancy permit till it's in.
Exactly.
Okay. So what?
These are good, these are good.
So the setback from the street is 339?
Yeah, it's required, what, 40?
40.
So does it need the variance?
No, because it's the exact same as it was before.
Pre-existing nonconforming. Down to the inch, tack in the footing, which is a rarity.
No variance. It's, there's no introduction of any new nonconformities, no.
And, so we should probably make note of the letter of the, the surveyor that's going to pin the foundation in the motion?
We should include that, that letter.
What's that letter? Can you, can you give me the heading of that?
Yeah, it was from some guy named Hood?
Yeah, Rick Hood.
There we have it. Uh, there's a shed there, is that being raised?
Uh, Richard, Richard Hood. Removed, I think.
Richard Hood Land Surveyors.
Richard Hood Land Surveyors?
So the shed's up?
Shed's gone, right?
Yeah.
Gone.
So Richard Hood Land Surveyors?
Dated February 13th, 2023.
So what's the size of this lot, by the way?
I got it here.
7,000...
How much?
I got it. With my microphone.
Seven...
7,302.
So it's under 10,000, gets 25% anyway?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the 19...
19.2.
Four, 19.2, so that's fine. I don't see any issues.
I don't either.
Did we read in everything?
Yes.
We did.
Okay. Anybody in the audience? Okay. Bobby, you're on this one, right? So, Ron, you want to make a motion?
Yeah. Like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Otuvia Olivera Construction, petitioner for 34 Quaker Run Road, says special permit is under 174-17.1 zoning bylaw to re-raise and replace the existing nonconforming single-family residential dwelling in a single-family residential, to replace a non, to replace an existing nonconforming single-family residential dwelling with a new single-family residential dwelling, property located in an R3 zoning district, map 83, parcel 8-0, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record Arnold R. Henderson and Janet A. Gerald, with the following condition. One, board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions of a special permit under Mass. General Law 48 Section 9. Two, site plan prepared for Arnold R. Henderson, 31 Quaker Run Road, Mashpee, Mass., date January 19th, 2023, drawn by RJH, checked by RJH, dated June 22, 2020, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, revised 2021-20, and 8-11-21, and 1-18-23, prepared by Richard J. Hood, PLS, stamped and signed by Richard J. Hood, professional land surveyor. Also make reference to a letter dated February 13th, 23rd, also prepared by Richard J. Hood, where he states that this building is going to be located in a, I would say, exact same location, and will be pinned, uh, to represent so in said footing when footing is installed. Number three, site plan, sewerage design, system design prepared for Arnold Henderson and Janet Gerald, 31 Quaker Run Road, Mashpee, Mass., prepared by H. Earl Lannery, P.E., consulting engineer dated 29/21, drawing 020921, stamped and signed by Harry Earl Lannery, Jr., number 26575, registered professional engineer. Four, condition and all town department comments written in the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and DPW. Number five, house plans, Henderson residence, 31 Quaker Run Road, Mashpee, Mass., plan date 7/20/21, drawn by SPB, scale 1 quarter inch equals 1 foot, designs by SPB, Cape Cod home design plans, A1, proposed left elevation, proposed rear elevation, A2, proposed first floor plan, S1, proposed second floor plan, revised, C, revised foundation plan, six foundation plan, Henderson residence, 31 Quaker Run Road, Mashpee, Mass., prepared by team engineering, S100, proposed first floor framing plan and foundation plan stamped and signed by Brian K. Key, registered civil engineer, number 54708. Eight, any changes to the plans require the applicant to return to this board. Nine, the board finds the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure or to the neighborhood. So I'm going to state that different. The board finds that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental to the town and/or the neighborhood. This has got me a little stumped. I've got to watch how I do this. The board finds the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental...
Than what previously existed.
Than the pre-existing nonconforming structure to either the town or the neighborhood.
Yes.
We have to include neighborhood, that's what's my point. The board finds that the application under 174-17.1 as submitted is not substantially more detrimental than what existed prior to the removal of existing structure, that there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking, and there are no new nonconformities being created. Redundancy, but it's okay.
We have a second?
Ha, ha, second.
All right, Jim, seconds. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
I think you guys need a peanut to be.
This is getting, I do want you to like it. I spent probably two hours reading the letter. I'm telling you. And then I, then my buzzer went, my phone's saying it's quarter of, you know, my...
I'd like to make a motion, move to approve the meeting minutes of January 25th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Uh, let's see. Bob, why don't you make a motion to close the meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to end this meeting.
You have a second?
Second.
I think it was George, George got it.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Good night.